I'm just, I'm just gonna case your material.
Yeah.
I have an intro.
You can also ask like. Yeah, you may just want to. Yeah, I think, I think so unless.
About there, about there.
Yeah, it's their interpretation of it, no, you didn't want to get that.
Something for law, because we'll, we'll.
Inserting. Yeah.
I mean, okay, and what are you going to do? Oh, yeah, oh, that looks like a.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's the one that was May is now going to December.
Anyway, I knew that. I was running reelection in ninety-one.
Okay.
And they tried to do a run. But people that I knew, they made assisted vote, but I knew that that was because they were going to go for me unless they were going to assist me. So this was that. So David said, and I go in, I. And I, so David's on the phone to the board of elections freaking out, and I'm just accusing them of. I said, you know, you're violating the law, I'm gonna say, doesn't mean.
Oh, uh, I've got it, yeah, yeah, I've got it, I, I made notes to it. Sure for you, yeah, we're, um, we get to. I mean, I reviewed that, you know, like. Yeah, and you know, I was really thinking when we did this, is that, you know, if it might get. Like, when everybody's doing that, is that how we're gonna do it?
Essentially, yeah.
All right, and so can I do that with this one then? Or, or is it, or is it, or because. Okay, so, all right.
But it doesn't, I don't think it has to be answered.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was like, I was thinking like, what's like, all right, we're in evidence, questions?
Yeah.
Uh, all right, okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm trying to think if there's anything. Yeah, really, yeah, right, I mean, like, the, you know, she's got the one dash one nine verification thing, yeah. So, I'm thinking maybe I'll just like, and maybe. Or anybody sees that, you know, this is, you know, yeah, or, you know.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
First, you had.
Oh, no, I, I didn't, I looked at them, yeah.
I, I just don't think I've been here, but if I have questions, you'll be sitting back here?
Yeah, we'll be right in the corner, do you have the?
I brought it with me.
Okay. Um, yeah, it's just, there's like two that just have additional, like, in addition, we said that five special.
Yeah, I understood that much.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And plus, I know the code, I mean, I, but it's been a long time, I mean, I remember, we dealt with, I mean, I dealt with some. Okay, and.
Right. It's actually, you picked the right, I mean, you picked the right, there's one, there's one case in, in, in the after. So.
I was like, Mr.
Yeah, we'll be done before three. Like, what?
Which is the more doing, the crap one or the other?
The other one, this one, this one's gonna get withdrawn.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I think, uh, this one, you came up for us for a different. Uh, no, it's a different, um. This, all right, this one is true, so they did something in the user. Whatever you want to do, whatever you're comfortable with, it doesn't matter to me. Yeah, whatever's, whatever makes you comfortable.
What is, there was some comments, what was it, about the, um, bags of honey, but it's just a nail, right? Other, other objectives?
No, not that, that one, another one. Another one, I'm.
Okay. Four twenty-six, oh, same lines.
If you can.
Okay, so it's not a nail salon. I got nervous when I heard the comments. So what I'm gonna do, I think, for my Christmas vacation, so I can bring back my, go back over the questions and I asked and didn't get answers because they were part of the zoning laws and see if I think. Is there anything I want to.
Sure.
I'm definitely gonna ask, um, to bring back this issue of.
Sure. Yeah.
But I don't, I don't.
Yeah, right.
Just reminding you.
Yes, I just told them, we're already closing the door.
Thank you very much. You gonna go?
Yeah?
Yes.
Katie, you gonna go?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks. Oh, yeah, I was worried that you might have mentioned.
All right, good morning, everyone, welcome to the October eighteen, twenty twenty-four meeting of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Brian Sanchez, I am the chairman of the ZBA. With me today are commissioners Swathy Staley and Helen Schiller to my left, and Adrian Soto to my right. Uh, I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Uh, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum, commissioner Soto seconds, commissioner Staley.
Present.
Commissioner Schiller.
Present.
Commissioner Soto.
Present.
I am present, quorum is established, the minutes of September's meeting have been distributed, unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed, commissioner Soto seconds, commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda, commissioner Soto seconds, commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved, now I will take any continuances and withdrawals, council fatigue.
Thank you, chairman, for the record, next fatigue is one of the things, uh, the top of page two, four oh nine, twenty four Z, and four ten, twenty four Z, uh, subject address. Twenty-nine forty-one West Horse, uh, due to the, the holiday today, the client, as well as his architect, are not available. Uh, we are asking for a one-month continuance, and I would ask if there's any chance of the added to the morning, the end of the morning call next month? I just want to avoid any kind of conflicts with, um, religious obligations.
Sure, uh, so calendars number four oh nine, twenty-four Z and four ten, twenty-four Z will be continued to November fifteenth, the nine AM call and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Any other continuances?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, I am Megan Murphy, attorney, I'm matter number four 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 dash twenty-four dash S, I'm the top of page eight. For the applicant AVM Industry Groups, uh, the address is thirty-three West Ontario.
Right.
Our client is actually out of the country for a family emergency, um, so we are respectfully asking for a one-month continuance if possible.
Okay. Uh, calendar number four forty-four twenty-four S will be continued to December twentieth, the two PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals, council Plocka?
Chairman, morning, commissioners, um, I have a case on page number six. Count number four three three, then twenty-four S for Exquisza Enterprise Inc. And for the record, my name is Antulus Plaka, I present the applicant, and this is the application for a special use established in Naudo Padio and expansion of an existing tavern. We are working with Department of Planning on some revisions to the site plan, we, we had very insightful comments. Unfortunately, the advocate was not able to, uh, actually make them on time, so we are actually asking for continuous until December, please.
So calendar number four thirty-three twenty-four S will be continued to December twentieth, the two PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, sir.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? All right, seen none, uh, Victor, call first case?
First case, two thirty-four, twenty-three S, twenty-five, forty-five, West Fulton.
Counselor?
Thank you, uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Richard Thuth, T O T H, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, when we received the original special use approval along with variation approvals, property was vacant, uh, since then, we secured building permits, they constructed the property. It's on the cusp of being available to be inhabited, uh, we could probably just proceed with the licensing, but out of, as a conservative measure, we wanted to, uh, get the special use extension. Just to tack on to that construction period.
Is a, a one-year extension?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Next case, going to the regular call, case number four oh five, twenty-four S, seventeen sixteen, West Lawrence.
My name is. Hi.
Good morning, could you, uh, state your name for the record, please?
My name is Nick, and I'm, uh, the owner of, uh, ten L O C, um, he, he really quit now, sorry.
Okay, uh, raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, um, and who do we have with you?
No, it's me.
Oh, okay, just you, okay, um, so this is for a, um, a nail salon, correct?
That's correct.
Can you, uh, tell us a little bit about your experience in the nail salon business?
Um. I am a nail tech since, uh, the night that. Two thousand, um. Two thousand seven, and I start open this nail salon since two thousand, uh, eighteen. So I applied for special use, uh, in, and got approved, uh, back in June, two thousand twenty-one. But I did not know that I had to do that of the, uh, CD's license, business, uh, license with the CD. Uh, for some reason, they canceled that application without my, um, awareness, and I have to go back, um, to reapply this application.
Okay, so are you currently operating the, the business? Okay, and how many employees do you have?
Five.
Five, so are they all licensed nail techs?
They are, yes.
Okay. And, uh, oh, I see, you, you, you actually had a letter of support from the Ravenswood Chamber of Commerce?
Next, correct.
Okay, any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thanks.
Next case, four oh six, twenty-four S, fifty-five, thirty-six, West Belmont.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we forgot the recommendation, um, let's just go ahead and read, uh, the recommendation for calendar number four oh five, twenty-four S.
Good for those. The department files to proposal, signs with all the most standards. The zoning ordinance was the interest of public convenience. Will not have a significant adverse impact on general welfare to neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design. And employee characteristics. Lastly, both nails line is designated designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Thank you.
Thank you, um, all right. And Fernando, uh, will you please read the recommendation for counter number four zero six, twenty-four S?
It's, um, the department of planning. Reproves hair. Department finds disposal. But with all the help, there is the zoning ordinance. Was it the interest of public convenience? Will not have a significant adverse impact on general welfare of the neighborhood. Department also finds the hair and nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. In terms of building scale and design, employee characteristics. Lastly, both hair and nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, thank you, um, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Sonia Lima, uh, for. A, my, a, I am owner of the Imagine Beauty Salon, my address is fifty fifty, uh, five five thirty-six, West Belbon Avenue.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you, all right, so you're here to open up a hair and nail salon?
It's, yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience in this type of business?
Yes, uh, ten years.
Ten years, and, um, do you have any licenses, whether in cosmetology, or, uh, for, for, for what?
What, law, the people work.
Okay, for nails or for hair, for both?
Yeah, for hair, uh, license for me.
Okay, everybody that works for you is licensed, is that true? Okay, um, what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
Uh, the opening is, uh, nine thirty, and the close is seven thirty PM.
Every day?
Uh, uh, Sunday is ten AM and four PM.
And how many employees do you have?
Five.
Five. Uh. And, uh, you also had a letter of support from, uh, Alderwoman Cruz, correct?
Yes.
Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Next case, four oh seven, twenty-four S, fifty-five, fifty-five, thirty-three, North Milwaukee Avenue.
All right, Fernando, would you go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number four oh seven, twenty-four S?
Is it the interest of the public convenience? And will not have a significant adverse effect on general comfort of the neighborhood. The department also finds hair salon. Area in terms of building scale and design, not creating characteristics. Lasting the whole sales line is designed for pedestrian safety and comfort. Thank you.
All right, um. Hi, uh, are you the only one who's going to testify today?
Yes.
Okay, could you, uh, tell us your name and address, please?
Okay, the address fifty-five, uh, thirty-three, North Milwaukee Avenue.
And your name?
My name is Bas, uh, Abdul Kader Misharka.
Okay, uh, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, uh, all right, so you're here to open up a barber shop?
Yes.
Can you tell us about your experience in the barber shop business?
Okay, my experience, thirteen years of, uh, barber, but I have a license like five years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, are you intending on having employees for the business?
Yeah.
How many?
I have, uh, five chair, but I have three employees with license.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you understand that only licensed barbers can cut hair, correct?
Yeah, I know, the custom origin barber, it's gonna be different, I know what's gonna be.
Okay, what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
From ten to seven.
Every day?
Yeah, but Sunday is ten to four.
Okay, okay, um, any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Next case, four oh eight, twenty-four S, thirty-three, uh, four, North Harlem.
All right, um, Fernando, would you go ahead and read the recommendation for counter number four oh eight, twenty-four S?
Sir. The department finds that also applies play. All ethical standards of the zoning ordinance. Is it the interest of the public finance, not of significant adverse impact on general welfare of the neighborhood? Department also finds the hair salon, barber shop, will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. In terms of building scale and design, operated character, and operated characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon, barber shop, is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort, comfort, thank you.
Thank you, uh, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Albeta Eddie, and my address is like thirty-three oh four North Harlem Avenue, six oh six, three four.
Uh, please raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, um, all right, so you're here to open up a barber shop, correct?
That's right.
Can you tell us about your experience in the barber shop business?
So, you know, I've been in the barber business for almost sixteen years, since when I was sixteen years old, so I started early, so this is my career for life. I know what I'm doing, and I know what, but like my experience in the street and show like the people who I am, and, uh, second of all, I do this for, for like my kids.
Sure.
So it's gonna be my first business.
Okay, and are, are you a licensed barber?
Okay. I am.
When did you get your license?
I had it, uh, no, I mean, February last year.
Okay, um, and are you intending on having employees?
Yes.
How many?
Five.
Okay, and you'll make sure that, uh, to the extent they're gonna be barbers, that they're properly licensed, correct?
For sure.
Okay, what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
From eight thirty until seven thirty.
Every day?
Every day, except Sunday from, uh, from nine to four.
Any questions from the board?
Just that your haircut is a good advertisement.
All right, thank you, we'll take this matter under advisement.
Appreciate you guys.
Next case, four eleven, twenty-four S, four oh nine to four eleven, North.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation for counter number four eleven, twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment provided that special use is issued solely to the applicant. Little Forest Massage LLC, and the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way. So that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise, council fatigue, short form.
You, chairman, for the record, you fatigue this from the losses of Sam Banks, I'm here to help the applicant Little Forest Massage LLC. The applicant intends on leasing the ground floor retail unit at four eleven West North Avenue, and is planning to establish a massage establishment in that space. In order to do that, we're seeking a special use because the property is located at B three dash three zoning district, um, we have two witnesses on behalf of the applicant. Sutita Kim Kong and our MAI praiser, Joe Ryan, and with that, I can call, uh, Ms. Kim Kong, go ahead, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sutita Kim Kong.
And, and your address?
You can speak a little louder?
Sixty-three hundred North Chedden Road, uh, I'm in six oh nine Chicago, Illinois, six zero six six zero.
And you are the manager of Little Forest Massage LLC?
Yes.
And you intend to open a massage service establishment at the subject property of four eleven West North Avenue, is that right?
Yes.
Um, you have five years of experience in the massage therapy industry?
Yes.
And you're properly licensed as a massage therapist by the state of Illinois, is that right?
Yes.
Um, your space will have two, uh, massage treatment rooms, a waiting area, and a bathroom, is that right?
Yes.
And you intend to, uh, any employees you hire will be properly licensed to provide massage services, is that right? Uh, the hours of operation are seven days a week from nine AM to nine PM?
Yes.
And it's your understanding that previously we submitted a, uh, witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, right?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Ryan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI president, LaSalle appraisal group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you're familiar with the subject property of four eleven West North Avenue?
Yes.
And the scope of your assignment was to evaluate whether the requested special use met the special use approval criteria, is that right?
Yes, it was.
And you physically inspected the subject property and the surrounding area?
I did.
And you, uh, concluded that the proposed massage establishment would meet all of those approval criteria, is that right?
Yes.
And you prepared a written report detailing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, I did.
It's your understanding that my office has already submitted a copy of that report to the board?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions in your written report?
Yes.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case, and chief, we have answering questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement, thank you. We'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, four twelve twenty four S sixty-six oh one to seventeen West Grand Avenue.
I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number four twelve twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a dual-lane drive-through for a proposed fast-food restaurant, Raising Cane's, with a fourteen-stall surface parking lot, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Raising Cane's Restaurants LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the S P one site plan, dated October eighteen twenty twenty-four, prepared by Kimberly Born, tree preservation plan, landscape plan, landscape specifications, fixture plan, floor plan, and proposed exterior elevations dated October eighteen twenty twenty-four, prepared by A D A Architects. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you so much, good morning, Mr. Chairman, and then seeing the numbers on the board for the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm a partner with the loss, I'm a good sexy, that was you that America's Mercado LLC. Super happy and grateful to be here this morning on behalf of Raising Cane's, brand LLC, which started business as Raising Cane's Chicken, or sometimes just known as Cane. Um, here with me today on behalf of the Cane's team is um Lou Aaron Foster, the Senior Property Development Manager, um, and also with operations. We also have Angel Robinson, the Property Development Manager for Cane's, Jeff Conney, the Project Architect, Tom Samfanski, the Civil Engineer and Site Planner, and Justin Opitz, our Traffic Engineering Consultant, as well as Joe Ryan, to round out the crew, our M A I Appraiser. Um, Raising Cane's opened its first restaurant here in the city of Chicago in and around two thousand seventeen in Rogers Park, and has been serving Loyola ever since. They've been expanding throughout the hundred and seventy-eight neighborhoods of Chicago, in such time now having nineteen, um, almost twenty restaurants throughout the greater Chicagoan area. If approved by this um honorable board here today, this would only be their second drive-through restaurant in the city of Chicago. Um, they were recently approved for one in the third ward on Jefferson Boulevard, which is currently under construction. Um, they do have a handful of other just non-drive-through restaurants throughout the city. Um, as Mr. Chairman indicated, we've been working with the Department of Planning and Development for several months, and there has been on the programming for the proposed new restaurant, which drives through as we have our plans. Um, and we do have a positive recommendation on the current plan that he's leaving for you there today. Um, in addition to our work with our ongoing work with the Department of Planning and Development, we've also engaged with both of the aldermen who kind of have boundaries um affiliated with the subject site, and that would be Alderman Talasiero in thirty-six, as well as um Alderman Vegas. I'm sorry, Alderman Vegas in thirty-six and Talasiero in twenty-nine. Um, both have offered their support for the project and are very excited to see a cane come to the neighborhood. So with no further ado, I will just briefly get the witnesses on. Um, I don't even need to ask questions and get them on the record.
Yeah, I think you can just have them swear to their affidavits and reports.
That sounds perfect. Um, Ms. Foster, if you could just again state your name and address for the record?
Ms. Foster, sixteen hundred Bishop Road, Plano, Texas.
Thank you, and um Ms. Foster, you were personally and actively engaged with all aspects of this special use application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And um, as indicated, a witness affidavit was provided to the board prior to this hearing on your behalf. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in that affidavit?
Correct.
Yes, thank you so much. So Robinson, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Angel Robinson, sixteen eight hundred Bishop Road in Plano, Texas.
Thank you, um, and Mr. Robinson, you too were very actively involved with all of the aspects of this special use application, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and similarly, you had an opportunity to go through the findings of fact, as well as Ms. Foster's affidavit prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Samfanski, um, may I please state your name and address for the record as long as well as your uh certifications?
Sure, uh, Tom Sabranski, um, with the family horn, a licensed civil engineer, address forty-two oh one Woodfield Road, Warrenville, Illinois.
Um, and you were particularly tasked with the site planning and worked um very diligently with the Department of Planning and Development on this um project, is that correct?
Correct.
And um similarly, if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be with all of the documents that were submitted in support of this application for special use?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Poutney, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Jeff Poutney, one seven seven one zero Detroit Avenue, Lakewood, Ohio. Uh, I'll be the project manager for this location from A D A Architects.
Thank you, and you were primarily tasked with the um design and functionality of the building, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and similarly, you were very actively involved in the entire process.
Correct.
Thank you, um, and then Mr. um Opitz?
Hi, Justin. Uh, Justin Opitz at one eleven West Jackson Boulevard, Street thirteen twenty, Chicago, Illinois, with Kimberly Born, and I'm certified transportation planner of the American East, certified planners.
Um, Mr. Opitz, and you um were specifically tasked with preparing a traffic impact study for this particular project, is that correct? Um, and if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in your study?
Yes.
Okay, and that is a part of the record, and then last, but certainly not least, Mr. Ryan, um, you've already been acknowledged here today, um, but can you just once more state your name and address for the record?
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I President with Sale Appraisal Group, the offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And you were um retained by the applicant in order to prepare the expert report on whether or not the proposed special use for a drive-through at this location meets solid standards and requirements under the current zoning ordinance for this type of use, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Was it your conclusion upon um your findings and evaluation of the site and the programming that this proposed special use as designed, does in fact meet all of the standards and criteria for a special use?
Yes, it does.
Thank you so much, and similarly, Mr. Ryan, you prepared a report that's been submitted to the board with these findings. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in your report?
Yes.
Thank you so much. No further questions, but we're happy to answer any you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I have one. Um, I just, I can't, I'm not sure, so I have to ask this question. How close is the um sound mechanisms for the drive-throughs to any residential units?
So, um, thanks for your, what's unique about this site is we actually, the closest residential as you'll see is up the left. That's actually, um, Michino Schiller, if you see that parking lot?
Yep.
That's actually going to remain as a parking purpose parking lot. Um, we are going to be oriented all the way over to the east side, so there's hundreds and hundreds of feet between the closest residential garage, detached garage, and our menu boards, and then something that's a little more unique with Raising Cane's, as well as they don't really utilize speaker, um, me- or menu boards. They have these tablets, they're able to place their orders and very digital oriented, so there's not a lot of sound that's gonna be emitted from these operations.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Right, any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Quickly, I'm sorry, I did have my girl, we both here, Timmy Ehren and Cecilia Mauer, because they wanted to um see what happens in these great four walls, because they only get to see daily center, so. Very excited to be here, and I I think you're welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
Take care, thanks so much, everyone, have a good weekend.
Next five cases, four thirteen twenty four Z, four fourteen twenty four Z, four fifteen twenty four Z, four sixteen twenty four Z, four seventeen twenty four Z, nineteen thirty six, for fifty east seventy-first Street, seventy fifty-two South Jeffrey Boulevard.
Alright, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counsel Borstein, you can proceed.
Thank you so much. Uh, here on behalf of South Shore Commercial Properties, I'm joined by uh Ms. Alyssa Starks, who's the manager of the LLC, Jack McLeno, who's our project architect, and you you sent him his own justice supporter.
Supporter, Valerie Batiste.
Not a witness, but
Sure.
A friend. Um, okay, so this project, yeah, I know you're familiar with it, is uh involves the construction of a new fantastic entertainment center at the corner of Seventy-first and Jeffrey in the South Shore community. Um, uh, it's a project that's been long in the planning and uh is really part of a critical effort, right? To really help revitalize the whole South Shore, Seventy-first Street corridor, so there's a lot of excitement about the project. Um, as you saw from our applications, we actually, there's five variations, it seems like a lot, but they're they really, it they they actually, four out of the five stem from the fact that it's a transit serve location. So that puts additional requirements uh on the project, one of which is like we want to reduce our blazing, because we've got theaters, right, so we can't have as much glass. Um, we, we've got two existing driveways and we want to just keep those. Um, that requires variation, we we have a a bus shelter that's in front of the building. We want to respect that, so we want to set our building back, so we need to, we need a variation for that. Um, we happen to be within a hundred and twenty-five feet of the Jackson Highlands uh community, which is in our district. And when you want to get a P P A license, you have to get a variation for that. Um, and let's see, I think there's one other one. Oh, and we're asking to reduce our parking, right, where it's a heavily transit serve location. Um, we've got the metro right in front of us, we've got bus lines all around us, so um we feel it's appropriate uh uh to be able to reduce our parking.
Yeah, and I I noticed that you've got support from just about every group in the area
Yeah.
for this project.
This is a, it's all a testament to our manager, Alyssa here, um, and this isn't her first entertainment project, she can tell more if you're interested, but yes, this is highly anticipated, very, everybody's very excited uh to get this going. And right, you you saw the letter from C dot, right, they uh wanted to reduce car auto trips, so they, you know.
I mean, I made, I mean, you've got, you've got the uh, let's see here, I made notes of it. You, so you've got uh Alderman Yancey, you've got South Shore Chamber of Commerce, South Shore Works, Jackson Park Highlands, Interfaith Housing Development.
Yeah.
Everybody's in support of this.
Individual neighbors.
Yeah, and right, and there were a bunch of individual neighbors as well, so.
It's very exciting, and so we might obviously get it up and running as soon as we can.
Yeah.
But obviously, first things first, we have to get approval from you, um, so, um, but and just one note, the Jackson Highlands folks, you know, them being the one, our district, they're on board with this too, so. I think we've covered, I covered the board with everybody, so with that, I would call my witnesses unless there's any.
No, I think you can do that, and you can do the short form, and we'll see if there's any questions.
Fantastic, okay, so Alyssa, would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Alyssa Starks, and my address is sixty-seven fifty-one South Constance in the Jackson Park Islands, and uh.
Oh, okay, well, so you you're you're familiar with the project, obviously, you're have, you you are the leader of the effort, and so we prepared a uh an affidavit, which went over various findings and conclusions regarding the project, some of which is the standards that you need for variations. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Okay. Jack, how about your name and address for the record?
My name is Jack Muffletto, and my address is eleven hundred Main Street, Suite twenty-two hundred, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one zero five, and I'm the architect.
And Jack, being the architect, you are also heavily involved in the planning, and you're familiar with the site, obviously?
Yes.
Yes, and you are also familiar that an affidavit was prepared uh for you, that also set forth various findings and conclusions, all consistent with the findings and information that we've all assembled related to this case. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
That's all for our case and chief.
Alright, and um if you could uh state your um name for the record, name and address for the record, please?
My name is Valerie Batiste, and my address is B A T T E A S T, and my address is seven two one seven South Halls in Chicago six zero six four nine.
And you're here in support of this matter?
I am.
And tell us why you're in support?
We need more ways that we can have a larger community in South Shore, places that we can spend our money within the community, where we can feel safe and um congregate together uh without uh fear of violence. Uh, so I think that this is a great opportunity for us to have an entertainment venue, one for uh more mature audiences, and be able to spend money within our community, and it also is uh important for our property values, I'm a homeowner.
Sure, sure, uh, well, thank you for coming, um, are there any questions from the board?
I was, yeah. I was just trying to, I was looking at the picture, I was looking at the site. So is the building that we see in the picture the building that it's gonna be, or is this a new construction?
No, that the building that you see on on the first that we saw is the existing building that's on the site.
Mm-hmm.
It will be demolished and it'll be a new building.
I was wondering how you do movie theaters inside that building.
I know, you know, at one point I had hoped I could, but it didn't work out. Okay, that was my question.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, well, it sounds like a great project, we'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Next case, four eighteen twenty four S fifty-two forty North Glass Road.
Alright, uh, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation for calendar number four eighteen twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a hair salon, hair braiding salon. Uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, uh, or group, virtual branding strategies, uh, forty-four twenty-two North Ravenswood, Chicago. I'm attorney for the applicant, I'm here with uh the owner of the applicant, S A Suti, um, owner of Amen African Hair Braids, and Joseph Ryan, a certified based real estate appraiser with Sale Appraisal Group. Uh, we'll start with uh Ms. Suti, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
My name is S C Suti, uh, forty-six forty-one North Mall, in Chicago, Illinois, six seven six.
Fantastic, and previously I prepared an affidavit of your testimony and submitted that to the board, is that correct?
Yeah.
And if I were to ask you those same questions now, would you testify, would your testimony be the same or substantially similar to those answers provided?
Yes.
Fantastic, uh, Mr. Ryan, if you could state your name and address for the board?
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And, Mr. Ryan, you previously uh prepared a re- uh report concerning this uh parcel and suitability for a special use permit?
Yes.
And that report was submitted to the board?
Yes.
And if you were to uh testify, would your test would have been the same or substantially similar? That's all I have.
Alright, are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, four nineteen twenty four Z, twenty-six fifty North Hills Air.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
All right, good, thank you, good morning, members of the board. For the record, my name is Emane Virem, with the law firm of Shane Banks, Kenyon Schwartz, appearing for Mariana Behanya, the applicant for the variation. Here with me today is the applicant, Mariana Behanya, and John Pimentel, the project architect. The subject property is located at two-six-five, two-six-five zero South Killair, and is improved with a two-and-a-half story residential building with two dwelling units, with a rear enclosed porch and a two-car rear front garage. The lot is approximately three thousand six hundred and seventeen square feet. The applicant is seeking to repair the existing residential building and plans to add a third floor addition to allow her to add another dwelling unit under the A U ordinance. The applicant purchased the property back in two thousand and three, yet in March of two thousand twenty-three, the residential building was severely damaged, no fault for a room. The building is legal non-conforming, the applicant seeks a variation to reduce the north side setback from two-point-three-two feet to zero-point-eight feet in order to establish the rear resistant porch. There's a lack of permitting history preventing the re-establishment after the fire. Without the request of variations, the applicant will have to engage in costly demolition, removing the additional ingress. Therefore, the request will not be injurious, for the, the block is predominantly multifamily, and there's multiple buildings with zero, zero north side setback. At this time, caller first witness, the applicant, property owner, Mariana. Ms. Behanya, you are the property owner and the applicant for the variation application?
Yes.
And you heard my summary, and you agree with my summary?
Yes.
And you submitted an affidavit, on the, I submitted an affidavit on your behalf, and you reviewed it, and you have personal knowledge of the effects in the affidavit?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony remain consistent with that affidavit? Mr. Chairman, at this time, can I call our second witness?
Sure.
Mr. Pimentel, you are the project architect who prepared the plan subject to this application?
Correct.
And did you, are your, are your statements true and correct in that affidavit you submitted? If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony remain consistent with your, with your statements in the affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, Case and Chief, if you have any questions, we would love to answer them.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Next case, four-twenty-four S, thirty-six forty-two S Oakdale.
All right, while everyone is getting situated, I will go ahead and read the recommendation for calendar number four-twenty twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, four-unit building, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by R E M Architecture, Inc. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor, you may proceed.
Apologies on the, I'm trying to get us here on time, it's just.
No, it's okay.
Wonderful, okay, thank you, everyone, for having us this morning. My name for the record is Jimena Castro. I am a zoning attorney at Acosta Esquer. Here with me today is the manager for the applicant for the property located at thirty-six forty-two West Oakdale. His name is Petros Kivalos. Petros, can you please state your name for the record and business address?
My name is Petros Kivalos, my business address is sixteen thirty-seven West Grand Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six-oh-six-two-two.
And then to his right is Rico Ramos, who is the architect of the project. Rico, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Rico Ramos, Rem Architecture, six-three-two-four North Abors, Chicago, six-zero-six-five-nine.
And then to his right is Peter Pulos, who's the appraiser for the case. Can you please state your name, Peter, and business address for the record?
Peter Pulos, P-O-U-L-O-S, business address two-three-zero-West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois, six-oh-six-oh-six.
And the board recognizes Mr. Pulos's expertise.
Thank you, and I just want to note for the record as well, we did have three objectors this morning. One of them, after conversations with them, one of them left. And I believe there are two gentlemen still here who are here to listen. I don't, I'm not sure if they would like to testify, oh, here they are. But all the matters that they were here for, we discussed.
Okay.
So, I will put on a regular case.
Sure.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. The subject property is located in a B-three-two zoning district on the north side of West Oakdale Avenue, between North Ridgeway and Central Avenue, in an area improved with residential buildings that include ground floor uses. The property was improved with a two-story residential building and two-car garage at the rear of the property. The ground floor included legal, non-conforming residential use. I did send in updated drawings to the board, and also updated photos showing the existing conditions, the building has since been demolished. So we have that, and the drawings reflect that as well, that we have worked with Nancy and Fernando for the updated drawings as well. The applicant seeks to construct a new four-story residential building with four dwelling units. There will be ground floor residential use to allow for a residential unit, as we do not want commercial on the ground floor. The property will include two surface parking spaces as required at the rear of the property. And as you all know, under a B-three zoning, we are required to appear in front of the board to request ground floor residential use. And construction, constructing a new building at the site will make sure that the character of the block remains as ground floor residential, as commercial would not be within the character. And we would, we are seeking your favorable consideration for this.
Okay, I'll go ahead and put your witnesses on.
Okay. Peter, we submitted documents on, on your behalf for the, for the board to review. If you were to testify today, would your testimony as appraiser for this case be consistent?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And Rico, you worked extensively with Nancy and her team to come up with revisions to the drawings that were acceptable for DPD. We submitted documents on your behalf for the board to review. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And then Petros, we submitted documents on your behalf for your case. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent according to the documents?
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, Mr. Pulos, just a quick question. This entire block of Oakdale is all residential on the ground floor, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board? Do, for the, for the two people that were, or may or may not be in objection, did, did either of you gentlemen wish to speak?
Uh, we have no objections to the zoning change or commercial to residential.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, Austin, are your witnesses here?
Yes.
Okay, next case, four-twenty-one twenty-four S, eighteen oh-two South Sacramento.
We just did twenty. No, no, no.
Four-twenty.
We're, we're four-twenty-one. Yeah, we're, we're. All right, while everyone is getting situated, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation for calendar number four-twenty-one twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a sixty-foot monopole with associated equipment for a freestanding wireless communication facility within an existing regional park, Douglas Park, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October one, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Mas Tech Network Solutions and Talman Consulting Engineers. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed.
Good morning, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Carroll with the Office of Commissar Raines, Attorney at Law. I'm here representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is a subsidiary of AT&amp;T Mobility, the applicant in the matter of the special use for the property in eighteen oh-two South Sacramento Drive and Douglas Park. Uh, applicant proposes to improve the subject property with a freestanding wireless communications facility, specifically a new sixty-foot high monopole with associated equipment for wireless communications. The primary purpose of the monopole and associated equipment is to improve cellular connectivity for users of the park and the surrounding area. The subject property is located in a POS-one Parks and Open Space zoning district, which zoning designation requires a special use for freestanding facilities. Though this aspect of the project is not strictly related to the reasons for seeking a special use, it bears mentioning that the applicant intends to pay for and arrange the removal of an existing steel lattice work tower in approximately the same location within the park prior to installing the monopole and accompanying equipment. That steel tower has been deemed structurally unsound, according to the Chicago Park District, who is the owner of the property, and unsuited to the purpose of mounting the applicant's intended equipment, and, and it no longer serves its original purpose, which is somewhat obscure given the age of the, the tower itself, but among other things, it apparently provided lighting to an adjacent pathway through the park. Uh, as part of the project, the applicant has committed to installing new lighting on their pole, which will illuminate the path. The proposed improvement is located within Douglas Park, as mentioned, and as such, private properties are located a significant distance from the proposed site. The closest right away on Sacramento Drive is located a hundred and fourteen-point-nine feet to the east. Albany Avenue is located three-hundred-and-four-point-two feet to the west, and Nineteenth Street is located five-hundred-and-forty-two-point-seven feet to the south. Uh, the subject is located north and west of a park restroom facility, as it immediately east of a walking path and a turf playing field that's used for soccer and football, with a surrounding running track that is fenced and illuminated via pole lighting. The subject is otherwise surrounded by unimproved open park space. Uh, I would like to now call my first witness, the applicant's representative, Brooke Schwartz, who is a senior real estate and construction manager for AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
Counselor, before you do that, is, is William McNary here?
Right here.
Oh, okay, you're here in objection to this matter, sir? Okay, did you raise your right hand when, if not here, if you just raise your right hand real quick? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. The question for you, Counselor, is have you had a chance to discuss with Mr. McNary the objection?
Um, so yes, we, we spoke prior to the, the hearing, and I believe Mr. McNary still wishes to express his objection, but we had a fruitful conversation.
Okay, okay, so just, all right, you can proceed then. Okay, so, um, Ms. Schwartz, will you please state your name and relationship to the applicant?
My name is Brooke Schwartz, I am the applicant, I'm an employee of AT&amp;T Mobility, over New Singular Wireless PCS, DVA, AT&amp;T Mobility.
Um, have you been out to the project site in Douglas Park?
Yes.
Okay, how many times approximately?
Approximately seven times.
Okay, how long have you been working on projects like these?
I've been working on projects such as this for six and a half years.
Um, have you worked on other cellular equipment installation projects in Chicago parks?
Yes.
Okay, and what are the general purposes of this project?
The general purpose of this project is to increase network capacity and coverage for the Douglas Park area, specifically within the park itself, as well as to provide additional capacity to cover any events that take place within the park.
Okay, I ma, I mentioned the steel lattice work tower that is on the current proposed site. Can you tell me a little bit about the existing steel tower that you propose to remove?
Uh, from my, what I know about the, the tower, it's been up for a very long time. Park District did not have anything available, any records available to share with us. Uh, we did some research and tried to look into getting some information about the tower and its strength and ability to support our equipment, and we were unable to find enough background evidence or a similar tower type available that would allow us to replace it like for life.
Okay, in addition to AT&amp;T's purposes, will, will there be co-location possible on the monopole to serve beneficial purposes for other members of the community or other wireless carriers?
Yes.
Okay, and this is something that you've discussed with the Park District?
Correct.
Okay, uh, what security measures will be in place to ensure that users of the park can access the AT&amp;T equipment situated next to the monopole?
So, picture that there is going to be a ten-foot tall chain link fence, twelve foot by eight feet around, with dual slats for protection, one vertical, one horizontal, as displayed in the picture in the upper right on this.
Okay, and to your knowledge, are there any other freestanding facilities like the proposed special use currently in Douglas Park or its immediate vicinity?
There's no.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwartz. As you are aware, I submitted an affidavit with your findings to the board on your behalf, as well as a supplemental affidavit pertaining to specific criteria related to freestanding facilities under the municipal code. Uh, do you recall that?
Yes.
Okay, and if I were to continue questioning you today, would your answers be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, I will now invite board to ask any additional questions, the witness.
No, you can go to your next.
Okay, we'll just go to the second witness then, okay. My second witness is Toby Sorensen, who is our expert on this matter. Toby, will you please state your name and occupation again for the record?
Toby Sorensen, uh, real estate appraiser, MAI.
Okay, and are you the president and owner of Case Chicagoland Ape Commercial Appraisal Services Firm?
Yes, sir.
Are you a certified MAI appraiser and member of the Appraisal Institute?
Yes, sir.
Will you? So are you familiar with the, the proposed special use at eighteen oh-two South Sacramento and Douglas Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and will you please briefly describe the subject property and the surrounding area?
Uh, it's located within the park approximately a hundred and fifteen feet west of Sacramento Boulevard at where Eighteenth Street would be. So it's, it's directly within the middle of the park, adjacent to a ball field, specifically a football field and a walking path, and as mentioned, an existing lattice work tower.
Okay, and you've been out to the, the site personally, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and based on your examination of the site and surrounding area, does this improvement meet the criteria for special use approval as set forth in the zoning ordinance?
It does.
Okay. Um, is it your professional opinion that the proposed monopole and associated equipment would be in the interest of the public convenience in terms of improved wireless communication services for users of Douglas Park and the surrounding area?
Yes, it is.
Okay, will the proposed use be a convenience and benefit to the area?
It will.
Okay, and in your opinion, would there be any negative impacts caused by the proposed freestanding facility?
No, there wouldn't, in fact, there are many benefits, some of which have been mentioned. Uh, in addition to enhanced accessibility and capacity for the immediate area, there, there's agreements in place to remove a potentially dangerous existing tower.
And is the design of the proposed use compatible with the surrounding neighborhood?
It is.
Okay, and on the same topic, is the proposed monopole close to any of the surrounding homes or properties adjacent to the park or likely to infringe on any local residents' sightlines or daily activities?
It's not, in fact, the closest right away is a hundred and fifteen feet to the east, and that cuts directly through the middle of Douglas Park. So further to the east is a continuation of the park before you reach any homes. Uh, the nearest homes would be approximately three hundred, in the vicinity of three hundred. Uh the nearest homes would be uh approximately three hundred, in the distance of three hundred feet to the west along Albany Avenue.
Okay, and I realize this question may be a bit incongruous, given that we are talking about a pole uh with cellular equipment, but was will the operations be compatible with the surrounding uses?
Yes, they will.
Okay, uh and does it enhance the uh comfort and safety of pedestrians?
It does.
In what way?
Uh there's additional lighting that will be installed on the path, and there's uh secure fencing, as mentioned, ten foot tall fencing, uh which is replacing existing fencing that is uh at the time of my inspection has been uh fall- it has fallen over and has been replaced with um essentially construction type plastic fencing that uh is not securing anything.
Okay, and did you prepare a written report discussing your observations and conclusions, which was recently supplemented with additional information regarding freestanding facilities criteria under the code?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and if so, was it your conclusion that the proposed special use would conform to the requirements of the code and zoning code for Chicago?
Yes.
Okay, so I've, as you may be aware, I've submitted your report to the board. Uh if I were to continue questioning you today, would your answers be consistent with the statements in your report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. That concludes our case.
Thank you. And just for the record, the board recognizes Professor Sorensen's expertise.
Thank you.
Uh are there any questions from the board before we go to uh the objector?
Yeah, I have a few.
Go ahead.
Uh um can, what is the, what I didn't understand was what the current, the use of the current tower is?
If, to my knowledge, uh it was previously used to illuminate the adjacent path in the park and had exclusively there.
So the, um I just had a picture of it. So what looks like things, the things that look like they're on the bar, those are lights?
Yes.
So it hasn't before, it hasn't, there hasn't been a cell tower here previously or so access. This is just for lights.
Correct, that's to my knowledge.
And it's been replaced by the other lights that are there by the park, presumably. So those lights aren't even working. It's just a tower that's there.
To my knowledge, they aren't functional. Um the uh there's adjacent lights that illuminate the field on my more modern taller ones, and those are the ones that are in in use.
So um the one thing that I noticed is on in the ordinance, and actually, which I remember was always an issue when I was older, um is the uh whether or not the proposed facility would cause electromagnetic interference with the antenna, and I didn't hear testimony on that, but you did testify that you meant the specifics of the ordinance. So can you, I'm not sure who the right person is, but can we get uh some clarification on that?
Thank you. It's it's a bit beyond the scope of uh my expertise. I'm not certain whether or not um.
I think Ms. Schwartz can probably speak to that.
Yeah, so given that it's not an existing tower, there would be no electrical, electric magnetic interference with other antennas, because there are no antennas on the town.
Is there any, um what I recall was that people were always really concerned about impacts from whatever um impacts from the, from cell towers, just like people have been concerned about cell phones, and I know there's been a lot more um information developed about that since, since I, in the last ten years, you know, I have them. So I'm wondering if you could just explain some of that to us, so we understand what the health issues might be or the reception of them and whether there's validity to those receptions.
Okay, um so AT&amp;T has strict guidelines to follow FCC rules and requirements, so that's how we um we we operate our towers to make sure we are within specified limits. Um additionally, the the antenna that will be placed on the monopole will be facing into the park. It won't be facing anyone's uh any homes, and so it will cover, i- if the signal will cover a broad area of the park and it won't be a concentrating beam that could be harmful to anyone um at ground level or throughout the park.
Including the folks on the football field.
Right.
Okay, uh at this time, let's go um to, I'm sorry, sir, uh is it Mr.?
Liam McNary.
McNary, uh if you could uh tell us why you're here in objection.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Sanchez, and the honorable members of the committee. My name is William McNary, and I'm a resident of uh North Longdale, and I'm also a member of the Albany Park Town Home Association. I live right across the street from where they proposed to build this tower. And I uh I'm joined by my neighbor from Little Village. His name is uh Omar Magana. He's also a member of the Arts and Culture Committee, vice chair of the North Longdale Community Coordinating Council. I'm also joined by my wife Sheila McNary, who's the executive chair of the North Longdale Community Coordinating Committee. I was gonna thank you for the opportunity to testify, but she is my boss, so I want to thank her for that. I will be brief. Uh we we, as residents of the Albany Park Town Home Association, have recently received a letter from this attorney uh from it and from Atlanta, Georgia's New Singular Wireless Company to erect a sixty foot high freestanding wireless communication tower in Douglas Park, which is right across the street from our homes, I guess on the west side, as they say. We have serious concerns about the power being placed in the park. This is the park where we walk the track with our neighbors. This is the park where regularly hosts soccer and football games almost daily across the street during good weather, where our children play. This is the park where our neighbors walk their dogs. This is the park where over twenty species of bird, excuse me, two hundred and fifty species of birds migrate every year. We are concerned about the potential health risks associated with increased radiation, as well as its impact on the parks and its natural beauty. We have become aware of scientific research that details health issues that have been associated with wireless EMF exposure, such as cancer effects, which detail how the distance from the tower can increase the risk or higher instances of infertility and miscarriages and nervous system effects such as DNA damage, mood, and then memory altering. Let me be clear, while while we do understand the need for improved connectivity, we question whether this private interest power should supersede the concerns of those who use Douglas Park as a public space. For the record, I've also presented a letter from the my neighbors, who are members of the Albany Park Town Home Board of Directors, expressing their oppositions for help. So I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and we welcome the opportunity to work with you.
Do you uh have any questions for the, any of the of the applicant's witnesses?
We actually had a conversation with the witnesses. I've I've expressed to them what I've just expressed to you.
Okay.
Our opposition will, at least a lot of the opposition will begin to decrease if they figure out another way to have this sixty foot tower away from our homes.
Okay, okay.
That didn't seem to be, it seemed to be something they couldn't do today.
How how far are your homes from the park?
Uh I I don't know the distance you want to.
It's two hundred and fifty feet. It was on your letter. It's not three hundred. It's two hundred and fifty feet from our homes. And um the children play right underneath where they want to put it. The the track we walk, it'll be, it's not even a hundred feet. It's right there. You can almost, will be able to touch it.
There's also a playground that's right next to that where all the little kids play. There's also the Caregrounder Center for Learning, which is right down the street, uh which is um is it um birth to, to eighth grade that they support. There's also two hospitals that are near the area.
Saint Anthony's and Mount Sinai.
And and it is said that hours can reach up to twenty five miles. This is, this is right there in our park.
Sir, um just for the record, could you, could you state your name and, yes, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Omar Magana, twenty two fourteen South Sacramento.
Okay, could you spell your last name for the record?
M A G A N A.
Okay, and and Sheila?
Sheila McNary.
Uh and address?
Sixteen forty South Albany Avenue.
Okay, okay, honestly, they've they've already been been. Well, actually, you know what? Let me make sure, because I know I swear in Mr. McNary, but for the two of you, you just raise your right hand, please. Uh do you swear affirm that everything that you've said in this was true and accurate to the to the best of your belief and that you will continue to be truthful and accurate in this hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, I I also want to mention, there is also maybe about seven towers that are around the park. So we don't see any need for there to be another one in the park.
And and we also have Wi-Fi that's been there, because the mayor wanted all of them. People in our community to have access to Wi-Fi. The children's run COVID. So all of the schools around there and the park have Wi-Fi inside up there. We, I sit out there every day, have a concession center. We already have Wi-Fi. People already are able to use their cell phones. So I don't see the need of a new tower with all the ones around us already.
It did, did um either, uh I know Mr. McNary didn't have any, but but uh Ms. McNary or uh Mr. Uh Magana?
Magana.
Magana, uh do either of you have any questions for the applicant's witnesses?
No.
Not already asked out there.
Okay, what were the questions that you asked out there?
I guess about why they think you feel the need to replace that lattice there, because to be honest with you, I live across the street. The park already repaired it. They repaired it in the last two weeks, because, you know, after riots fest leaves, they have to repair what's, somebody already repaired that structure. It's not leaning anymore. There is new lighting on there. And they also mentioned it would have more illumination in the park. That park is lit up because it's a football field there. We don't need any more lighting there. It's already lighting. And that tower, that's, it's not leaning anymore. I showed them the the picture that it's not dis-repaired any longer. They already repaired it. Somebody did. And it and it even have lights on there, because, you know, they had a football game last night, and I was like, it's it's working. But at one point, it wasn't leaning, but somebody's repaired it. They've even gone underneath it and repaired the wiring, so I just don't see the need, you know, for them to say that that's a danger to anyone. The danger to me would be the the uh Wi-Fi being there.
Mr. McNary, you you had mentioned um concerns, uh he- health concerns and uh is thing, things that you had read. Do you, are you able to tell us any of the literature that you've read regarding the health effects? Can you?
Yeah, I I will. Again, let me be clear. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a scientific editor, I'm sure. And uh what I, what I will send you is what I've been sent and and been reading about is some uh hold on. Let me, let me very accurate about what I've. Maybe, and also, let me just say that um all this is new to me, and hopefully, I'm, hopefully, I'm as passionate as my wife, but she is very, very passionate. And she asked me when I'd come and testify for her, and I said, well, yeah, because I actually do want to stay living with you. But hopefully, my passion will, hopefully, my passion will be begin to match her. The information I've been given to start, and this is one of many, but the one of the most substantial of the things I've been reading has been this organization called the and and Sheila can actually send it to you as well. Uh. It's a, but it's a organization that has been doing a lot of research on cell phone towers. It's called uh Physicians for Safe Technology is one of them. Uh it's also the Environmental Health Trust. It's also the um what's the name of this company, honey? You know, shares this system of the tower. Anyway, just so, again, it's just my read. So I, again, let me be very clear. I'm not trying to be a scientist. I'm not trying to stop the progress. Again, the concern that has been expressed, and I was, I was very surprised about the fact that quickly, once people found out about it, there was more and more and more uh opposition to it.
With our neighbors.
With our neighbors across the way, my brother here, who, you know, when he found out about it, he's our, you know, friends. They are just concerned about it being a permanent sixty foot tower with possible health risk. And we don't necessarily want to be the guinea pigs here, I mean, because that, which is not a health risk today, FTC, FDA, whatever, it could be a health risk tomorrow. And so again, if they just figure out a way to put this sixty foot tower somewhere else, we have a healthcare concern, but we also have aesthetic concern. Again, this is a public space where our people use this space, not a abandoned public space. This is a space that is in use date. And oh, I walk the track every day. These kids have soccer and football games almost nightly when it's warm weather. The two hundred and fifty bird, I our neighbors walk their dogs across from this park. Our position is to clear. We're not against progress, but we are against the possibility of putting a permanent sixty foot tower away from the island, as my wife just expressed. Supposedly to replace an old structure. This structure has already been replaced, unfortunately. Unfortunately, for the original purpose, it's already been replaced by someone with lighting available already. So if they want to replace that structure, they actually have to tear down something that's already been rebuilt.
Any other questions for Mr. and Mrs. McNary or Mr. Magana before we go back to the applicant?
Yeah, I was wondering if um you, if you could identify or let it, you you'd mentioned that there were so, I think you said something like seven other towers in the area?
Yes.
How brought, where? I mean, how brought, within what distance would you say?
It would be less than a mile.
Uh in.
All around.
All around it?
There's there's one actually unlocked and and uh it's right by Central Park, maybe. Uh I don't know the exact address. There's also one on Sixteenth Street, on top of a school building. There's one on, on Cermak, um by Kenzie. There there's one, um I can give you a list of them. I just know, one of the things that has happened here as to to put an actual tower up is one thing. Put antennas that shoot out over two two twenty five miles is a different thing. Uh the 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 residents have been informed that there's a tower going up. But if if it's about what what affects, what affects the antennas going to do, why haven't the residents of Little Village been informed that it's going to be a new antenna? It's going to be throwing rays or or radiation or whatever it is to them. Why haven't they been informed? Why haven't, I mean, I just heard of this, because I'm in the North Longdale Community Coordinating Council. You know, uh we're we're two blocks away from the park, and we weren't informed, but yet the ray will be affecting us.
So that is our concern. There's another tower on
um Washington and Twenty First. It's somewhere right by that school that's there, right by uh Sinus Bay. There's another tower there. So the park is surrounded by towers.
And another thing, I'm a pediatric nurse, and there are studies, I guess, that, you know, of course, children's brains are, have a thinner, you know, encapsulated by thinner skulls than adults, even though we call them hardheads. And their brains can be affected more so by those rays. And there's been a lot of people pushing against those towers being put on the schools, and you all know the behavioral problems that we're having with our children. Now, maybe, perhaps, maybe, it might be because of all the EMFs that surround them and the radiation that they're experiencing in their brains, you know. Another concern.
Any other?
Yeah, uh you mentioned Sinai Hospital on Saint Anthony or close by. Have they shared an opinion or have they chimed in in terms of their support or lack of support for this?
That that's one of the things that has come to my attention as part of the Marshall Square Resource Network, which Saint Anthony and um Mount Sinai are part of. We haven't been informed. I I was just informed, so I am here just to not to speak for them, but at least find out what is going on, so I can let them know. It is over forty organizations that work right there on Marshall Square, which is right on Cermak and Sacramento, right, right in by Douglas Park. So I will be informing them uh that this tower is being requested to be put up, where there's a light tower, not a cell tower. It's 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 a light tower that being, wants to be changed into a cell tower, which which we do not, I do not agree with. So I would like to at least share that with all the organizations and and many of the citizens that reside in Little Village.
We just got that this zoning in like a week ago. So we haven't even, you know, no one was organized because of that. But I doubt if they got it, you didn't get it.
I did not get it.
Some of our neighbors did this.
All right, are there any other questions for uh any of the objectors before we go back to the applicant?
I don't know who can answer my question. I do, I want to, I do want to know how tall the existing tower is.
Does anybody know how tall the existing tower is?
Existing tower is approximately sixty feet plus or minus a few inches.
Okay, all right, let's, at this point, we're going to go back to the applicant for closing, uh for rebuttal and closing.
Okay, um so one thing I want to talk about is uh have have you had consistent communication with the, and this is to to Ms. Schwartz, um have you had consistent communication with the Chicago Park District regarding this project? have you had consistent communication with the Chicago Park District regarding this project?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, for how long has that been going on?
Uh, approximately a year.
Okay. And were you, uh, as the project lead, were you a, a party to most of those conversations? Okay. Did, um, did AT&T slash the applicant new singular, um, uh, consider other options for, uh, for locating equipment, uh, within the Douglas Park area to serve the purposes that this is intended to serve?
There was other options prior to settling on the pole.
Okay. And what, what, what was discussed and why didn't you pursue those other options?
So the other options were the streetlights along Sacramento. Is that the, the street inside? Um, and that was not, uh, there was not approved by City of Chicago Department of Transportation. They would not allow us to locate on those poles. Uh, we also did consider using the tower. Uh, but upon our findings, um, there was no record from the Chicago Park District. The pole is, or I'm sorry, the tower is, um, rusting. It's kind of unsightly. It's not structurally sound. We weren't able to find anything that we could replace with like-for-like. Um, they don't make other square poles that were available for purchase. Would have had to been completely fabricated from new, torn down. And then also we don't, we don't know the conditions of the foundation, how long it's been there, what that looks like. And we weren't able to determine that to make sure that we could design something that was structurally capable of standing for fifty-plus years.
Could you, could you share what the rationale for the City of Chicago's denial for utilizing the light poles on Sacramento?
They just weren't, weren't an option. Uh, I don't have all the information, but the Department of Engineering, they deem yes or no, um, based on whichever, or whichever part of their ordinance um, is available and then they deem yes and no.
How they'll use your equipment if it goes on the tower?
Uh, the equipment will not be on the tower. It will be in a cabinet of these.
So if you use the city lights, it would be in the base area? You'd create a new base area for the city lights?
We, we would, yeah.
I, I, I have, I have another question.
Sure.
Um, so did, so if AT&T had had its preferred, if it, if it had its, uh, if been able to do as it wished in the park, would this, uh, proposal have been the, uh, the preferred option?
Ideally, you know, center of the park would give us a three hundred and sixty-degree, uh, coverage, but no, that we were only allowed to use or replace an existing structure. The structure in the, in question here, the lattice tower is unsafe, so we offered to remove that in exchange for placing another pole adjacent that will last. So the park district no longer has to maintain this tower. They can save money. They don't have to worry about taking it down. Uh, they've essentially retired it in place. The lighting is sometimes works. I was out there with the Chicago Park District when they turned it on to show us an example of what it was. Um, the, the lighting fixtures themselves are very old and dated. We will be replacing them with brand-new fixtures that are park district approved.
So would it be fair to say that this was sort of a, a compromised position with the Chicago Park District, who of course is owner and maintainer of Douglas Park?
Correct. They, like I said, they wanted us to, to locate on, on something existing or replace existing for new. We were not allowed to put anything brand-new standalone in its, in its own.
So when you, um, testified that there were no other towers in the general area, which is what the ordinance says it's kind of aged, what was the, um, the, the circumference that you used for that evaluation?
Uh, within the park.
So you, you just, so within the park, there's no other, but you didn't consider the geographic rather than that?
So the, the other areas, uh, those are macro towers. And so they, there is a different, uh, macro. So like you're, you're your full-blown cellphone tower, uh, multiple panels, multiple sectors, um, large ground presence, uh, like a shelter or a walk-in cabinet at the base, um, requires well over a hundred to two hundred and fifty square feet of compound area. It just takes a much larger, much larger space. Um, none of that was available within the range to provide the capacity, um, that we needed to uh, support for the Douglas Park, the park itself.
So your focus is providing service to Douglas Park or to the twenty-five-mile area around you?
So this won't propagate twenty-five miles. It's not that type of cell site. There's a, a antenna that will just focus. It'll propagate to the east. On the west side of the park, it'll propagate east to cover the, the open space.
And was this something that the park district requested?
They did not request it. We, we approached them. The request to replace the lattice tower, remove the lattice tower was, uh, in a, in agreement between us.
So what I'm trying to understand is what's the problem that this structure is trying to solve, right? Is it, is it that there is inadequate coverage in this area?
It is. It's a capacity concern. So the, the network will get over, uh, overburdened with capacity when there's events um, and other various things going on in the parks. And so the, the improvement is to cover them capacity.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So you're approached Park District to increase capacity for specialized one-time events, not everyday use by residents?
No, it'll, it'll use, it'll be available twenty-four seven. It's a permanent structure.
Right. But the need for the increased capacity is to address the events that come to the park?
For events, uh, that not solely for events, but when, in, in the event of a large event or a large gathering in that area, we will have network infrastructure available to cover that capacity requirement.
Is that just respond to your clients of, of AT&T?
So it's, it's AT&T, but there's also a dedicated first net, network. So in the event of an emergency situation, first responders have a specific uh, SIM card in their cellphone that allows them to cut the line so that they get priority with their calls so they can communicate and, uh, coordinate any of their response activities during, uh, any kind of event, whether it's a natural disaster or, you know, large gathering, anything that goes on where they need to be able to communicate and conduct safety efforts.
And that functionality is built into it. That's, that's a part of this.
Correct.
So during special events, though likely being people with multiple different um, carriers that they use. So does that mean it's likely that other carriers would be adding onto your tower?
It's possible.
And what is, in terms of the science, what is, does that increase the amount of what radiation that people are concerned about?
So each carrier will have its own spectrum. Verizon and, uh, T-Mobile, they each have their own spectrum. AT&T has its own spectrum. So we operate on a frequency and that's how we're able to, to communicate and keep everything separate. So if another carrier was there, it's the same, same FCC rules and guidelines. It's just a different frequency band. Uh, so it doesn't change the, the science or the propagation. I, I can't speak for other carriers and what they would do. I, I can only speak to, to ours and we only propagate our signal, our signal, um, when it's on.
So, but it's not the signal, is the infrastructure that causes the concern that the, the effects that people are concerned about?
It's, it's the sig, the, the people have the, the concern.
So the additional signals may or may not be, you don't know, but.
They, 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 they're, they're separate. So they're not going to go, they're not going to compound or multiply or that, that doesn't happen. It's, um, radio frequency signals exist all around us um, in many different spectrums, uh, many different frequencies. And so we are um, just operating within our frequencies.
And I have one more question. Uh, the birds were raised and there's been a lot of issues in the city about the city being a location of a lot of migratory birds. This is the first I've heard about here, but, you know, and, and a lot of concerns with tiger business, um, which I understand, um, the, the, are you familiar with any impacts that your, um, uh, that these cell towers create or is there any effect that they have on, on the migratory birds or any of them? Because apparently there are a lot that go through here.
So the Federal Migratory Birds Act is something that all telecom companies are required to adhere to. And, um, essentially it means that if we, we have to consider that when installing towers, um, and then if there's nests in towers during breeding season, we have to stay away from those towers and allow the young birds to, to leave the nest before we could do any kind of work on the tower. Um, and so that, that goes into our consideration, but it was not determined, um, in our compliance filings that there, this was high risk for migratory birds in this area.
For, for, for one, for one-time events, are there temporary solutions that could be brought in to increase capacity?
The, right now we have cell sites on wheels. We, we call them cows for short and, uh, they, they do get deployed for special events. And what that does is it, it's, it's there temporarily, um, it takes up a portion of the park and then it sits and it kind of tears up the grass and takes away from the aesthetics of the parks. What we're trying to do is avoid that by putting something permanent. So there's nothing that's going to be there for a little while, tear up the grass because of the heavy equipment and then be removed from the park, leaving behind the need to restore with fresh sod or anything.
Uh, you renting a space from the park district?
Correct. Upon completion of the, the build, we, park district will take ownership of the pole and we will pay them rent.
Uh, you'll pay them what?
Rent.
Do you have any other further questions for your witnesses?
I, I don't have any additional questions. I just did want to state one more thing for the record. It's my understanding that, um, a letter was, uh, directed to the board's attention from Alderman, uh, Alderwoman, um, Monique Scott, expressing support for the project, uh, which was dated October seventeenth. So I just wanted to reference that, yes, yesterday.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. We will take this matter under advisement. I'm sorry, we've already gone back to the, uh, the applicant's case. He missed this one. Um, uh, we will take this matter under advisement. Um, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two cases, four twenty-three, twenty-four S and four twenty-three, twenty-four Z, two, three, twenty-four, north, northwest highway.
Yeah, all right, all right. Let's, let's, let's go on the, let's go on the record, because we got to call recess first. Before we call the next case, I moved that we, uh, recess until, uh, ten fifty. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Shiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto, I vote yes. We are in recess until ten fifty.
All right. Just checking, do we have fifty-two, twenty-four north, okay? Do we have thirty-fourteen north, okay? Do we have nine thirty-four west of Mercy in here? That is okay. All right. How about forty-eight, twenty-seven south St. Lawrence? Yeah, okay. All right, and it's. Twenty-fifty-eight west Webster, they're here, okay? And eleven eighteen north Oakley. Okay, got it. All right, we're good, so. Yeah, so that would be, um,
Thirty-three, forty-five, north Broadway, seven?
Yeah.
And sixteen, forty-seven?
Yeah. So we got it, okay. Is Tyler here? Tyler Manick? Uh, he might still be out there. All right, I think Tyler Manick. Yeah, you can call him if you want. He's probably. All right.
But sixteen, twenty-two, or five, I forget.
No, so the, the site plans, what plan?
Well, next time we'll try and consolidate.
I literally just hit like the.
Okay.
No, it actually was the. And people are out of the way and all the, the man. And I'm, I'm not going to stay here, but that room is empty. You know, why would you bring them up here and you got to change? Why did they click the webhead? Somebody know what, what I'm talking about. Would you, why in the hell are y'all stuck up here like starting to hide in the hall when it's, that chamber is empty? And you all should have known about that chamber. Don't look at me like I'm crazy. That, nobody's using that chamber. Nobody. So you should have that meeting downstairs on the second floor. Now, now, whoever with that disconnect needs their A K. That, that's it all out here in the hall. He told me that, that someone is using it. I went down there. Nobody's using that seventh floor. There's no, there's no need in that all today. Why would they do this? And why in the hell would y'all do this?
Um, telling you, he always has announced the truth of what he says, always. It takes a lot of anger and
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's another gentleman. I went to USC. My sister. We are.
All right. I just have my regular question.
Because even the other one was open, you know, and that one. Those guys didn't end up having an objection, so I think that's
That's the only objective.
I think so.
Well, that means this is pretty subtle.
Yeah, it should be.
I'm surprised, actually, because usually when you get one of those health problems. But there was some Some on the north side, there's so few gas stations on the north side. It's on western.
All right, let's do it. So Katie, you ready? All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Shiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're back. Uh, and we are on case number four twenty-two twenty-four S and four twenty-three twenty-four Z. I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation for counter number four twenty-two twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a single lane drive-through to serve a proposed fast food restaurant Taco Bell within an existing building provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. A G Bells two LLC and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, landscape plan and landscape details dated October ten twenty twenty-four, prepared by Kim Lee Horn. And site plan and details, floor plan and exterior elevations, two sheets, a four point O and a four point one dated October ten twenty twenty-four, prepared by M R V Architects. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Yes. Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Poulos's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. Uh, good morning still. Uh, to everyone, thank you for having us today. My name for the record is Jimena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Costa Esger. I am one of uh the zoning attorneys for the applicant, uh A G Bells two LLC. And with me today, I have members uh of the applicant and uh the architect and also the land appraiser. So I will go ahead and introduce them. To my right is Mario Valentini, who is the architect. Mario, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Yep, Mario Valentini, M R V Architects, fifty-one oh five Tollview Drive in Rolling Meadows.
Thank you. To Mario's right is Cesar Almas. Cesar, can you please state your name and your business address for the record? And also, can you confirm that you're a director of operations for the applicants?
Sure. Caesar Almaris, Director of Operations, uh address three zero two Saunders Row, Suite one fifty Riverwood, Illinois, six zero zero one five. Riverwoods. Oh, Saunders Row.
Saunders, S A U and D E R.
To Cesar's right is Jason Blumenfeld, who is construction manager for the applicant. Uh, can you please confirm that you're construction manager, uh Jason, and also state your name and business address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jason Blumenfeld. I'm construction manager for A G Bells two LLC in this case. Business address would be three zero two Saunders, S A U N. Saunders Row, Suite one fifty, Riverwoods.
Thank you. And then to his right, we have Peter Poulos, uh the land appraiser. Peter, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Peter Poulos, P O U L O S, two thirty West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero six.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the subject property is located in a B three one zoning district and is improved with a vacant one-story commercial building with eight parking spaces. There are three parking spaces off the north side of the property facing north Northwest Highway. The spaces are an existing improvement. We're here today for two reasons, uh a special use and a variation. The applicant seeks to reuse the existing building for a proposed Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through, which is the subject for the special use before you today to allow the drive-through at the property. The proposed drive-through will enter and exit the property from the north side of North Northwest Highway. And uh the applicant uh filed a special use and after conversations with Nancy Razovich and her team, uh it was determined that we also needed a variation as well for setbacks. And uh the setbacks are regarding uh the existing perimeter landscape buffer along Northwest Highway, which is currently five point five feet wide. And under the code, which is an existing condition, of course, under the code, that setback needs to be seven point uh seven feet wide. Uh, to achieve the required landscape buffer under the ordinance, the six existing parking spaces along Northwest Highway and associated curb line along Northwest Highway frontage would need to be adjusted. Actually, those parking spaces would be eliminated. Three of them are not ours. Uh, and uh in speaking with the alderman and the alderman staff, we uh would need to find somewhere else in the property to accommodate parking, uh which is not ideal. We have met with uh the community various times throughout the year. We have their support and uh we ask that the special use be allowed for this drive-through and also the variation to uh make sure that the setback for the landscape buffer perimeter stays as is. We want to maintain existing conditions, which is a hardship in this case for the variation portion. We ask for favorable consideration and like mentioned, we have the aldermanic support, community uh community support as well.
Do you want to have your witnesses swear to their affidavits?
Yes. Mario, we submitted an affidavit and materials on your behalf. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with uh the materials provided to the board?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Cesar, we submitted uh an affidavit and materials on your behalf to the board. If you were to testify today regarding the operations for the special use, uh would your testimony be consistent with the material provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And Jason, we submitted uh material on your behalf to the board that they have reviewed. If you were to testify today in terms of construction and all of that, uh would your testimony be consistent with the material provided?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Peter, you submitted uh the land appraiser report in regard to the special use. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the report you have provided?
Yes, it would.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Can we go back to the slide that has the um oversight sort of to that one? Yeah. Can somebody, um, I don't know, either with uh one of those light things or go up there and show us how, where it is that there will be people making orders? I want to see where that is in relation.
Do you mind if I stand? Am I permitted to do that?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna take Fernando's pen.
Just don't start drawing on the wall.
Which, by the way, the crunchy number three Supreme is my favorite. So the orders will be done. We have, uh, sorry. We have um the this section right here is where the orders go to place. And then the corresponding room is over here and there's going to be a bit of a right here.
And what kind of um sound? How far is that from where the, is that residential units?
Nope, this is all ring, uh real buildings.
And what's that next to it there?
This one is another, uh, it's a shopping center.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, multi-tenant building. It's not residential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, uh teacher, I mean counselor Castro. Um, all right, any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, four twenty-four twenty-four F, thirty fourteen, North California.
This is my is
All right, while everyone is getting situated, I will read the recommendation for counter number four twenty-four twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand residential use below the second floor to allow an existing first-floor dwelling unit to be expanded into the basement of an existing two-story six-dwelling unit residential building, which is being converted to a four-dwelling unit residential buil- building, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October sixteen twenty twenty-four, prepared by uh B L Z G Prage Architecture and Design. Uh, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognized Mr. Poulos's expertise. Counselor Castro, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. Uh, everyone present, good morning. Uh, my name is Jimena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Costa Esger. Uh, here today on behalf of the applicant, uh thirty fourteen North California LLC. I do want to note that for the record that there was an applicant change, uh and those materials were provided as uh swaps to the zoning board of appeals staff. There was an ownership change. Um, and I would like to as well make sure that the previous property owner, who was Ilda Rodriguez, I would like to know that she is no longer involved in uh ownership of the property.
Okay.
For the record.
Okay, understood.
Uh, the subject, uh, oh, actually, Hamel, uh, Hamel, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Sure, my name is Hamel Rohit, P U R O H I T. And uh I'm representing Build Project Inc. Their address is forty-four sixty-eight North Alston Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six three zero.
Thank you. And then to the architect's right is Odilon Rodriguez. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
My name is Odilon Rodriguez, uh three zero one four North California. LLC.
And you are the manager of the applicant, correct?
I'm the manager.
Thank you. And then to his right is Mr. Peter Poulos, who is a land appraiser in this case. Peter, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Peter Poulos, P O U L O S, two thirty West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero six.
The subject property is located in a B three one zoning district in an area that includes uh a mix of uses along North California Avenue, among them ground floor residential uses. The property is improved, as the chairman uh correctly stated, with a residential building with no parking. The building includes four legal units and two illegal units. The ground floor includes legal non-conforming residential use because of the existing zoning. Mr. Odilon and his LLC recently purchased the property. And uh in order to clean up the interior of the building, to do some renovations, he would like to get rid of the illegal units uh that he bought. And he would like to provide four legal units. So he's getting rid of the two illegal units. He's renovating the interior of the building. And in doing so, he has triggered uh a special use that he needs uh your approval on to make sure that we remain and maintain uh the ground floor residential use in the building. As I mentioned, uh, we were here because of the B three zoning and rehabilitating the building uh will uh ensure with the ground floor residential use that we stay in compliance with the character of the the block and to maintain ground floor residential use in this building that has been there for a very, very long time. We have uh no objection from the alderman's office. And that communication has been provided to uh the Z B A as well, and we seek your favorable consideration.
All right, if you you want to have your witnesses uh swear to their affidavits and reports, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Prohit, you are the architect for this case?
Yes.
Uh, and can you uh please testify whether the materials that we provided to the board, which they have reviewed, would be consistent with any testimony that you would give today?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, we provided materials to the board, uh including some modifications to the ownership documents uh that are now in possession of the Z B A. If you were to testify today, if you were to be asked any questions, would your testimony be consistent with the materials that the board has in their possession? Thank you. And then, Mr. Peter Poulos, you prepared a land appraiser uh report on behalf of uh the applicant. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the report you have provided?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, just to confirm, oh, that the uh adjacent properties are, don't have a commercial on the ground floor, right?
They do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, four twenty-five twenty-four S, nine thirty-four West diversity Parkway.
All right, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and read the recommendation for counter number four twenty-five twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed business live workspace within one unit on the ground floor of an existing three-story mixed-use building, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October eleven twenty twenty-four, prepared by Exios Architects and Consultants. Would everyone uh plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Uh, thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Kerwin's expertise. Counselor Fatikas, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir, again for the record. Nick Fatikas from the Law offices of Sam Inks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, nine thirty-four LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at nine thirty-four West diversity Parkway. The uh subject property is improved with a three-story mixed-use building containing a retail unit at grade and then three residential units above. Unfortunately, um, the retail unit has gone through a bit of a transition. Uh, while it was occupied, there has not been a paying tenant uh for about two years, uh and for the last year it's been vacant. Um, so in an effort to make the unit a little bit more appealing and marketable, the applicant is seeking a special use to convert it to a business live work unit. Uh, a special use is required because of the underlying B three dash two zoning district. Um, I have three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Costa Sontas, our project architect Benjamin West, and our M A I appraiser, Mr. Kerwin. Um, and with that, I could call uh Mr. Sontas. Uh, let's see, state your name and address for the record. And again, you're one of the managing members of nine thirty-four LLC?
Yes.
And uh, that entity owns nine thirty-four west diversity, is that right? And again, uh, we're proposing a special use to convert the existing retail unit on the first floor to a business lived work unit, is that right?
Yes.
And the idea there is to help broaden the range of potential tenants on, for that space.
Yes.
And as part of this process, is it true that you uh, did uh, have conversations with the East uh, Lakeview Chamber of Commerce?
I, yes, I'd love to.
Maureen from the East Lakeview Chamber, um, and it's your understanding that I've also, uh, we were able to get a letter of no objection from Alderman Lawson, is that right?
Yes.
And uh, is it true that you, uh, that we prepared a uh, witness statements for this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements you provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman, it is a special use, but I do have, Mr. West, if there's any questions about the integration of the space, so maybe I could just skip to Mr. Kerwin.
Yes, please.
Uh, Bud, can you please state your name and address for the record?
It's uh, Sylvester J. Kerwin Jr. I'm president and owner of Best J. Kerwin Associates Offices at seventy-seven sixty-five West Martha Avenue in River Forest.
And Bud, uh, you were retained in this case to help determine whether the proposed special use, but the general criteria for special uses as well as the additional live work criteria, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you physically inspected the subject property?
Yes, and it is recently, it's this week on Wednesday, this sixteen.
And you prepared a written uh, M A I report summarizing your findings and conclusions? And generally speaking, you believe that this is an appropriate and compatible use of the subject property?
My research and analysis included that in. This proposed use is a recent use, uh, with the business live work use. In this district, there are retail uses along diversity, New Sheffield like this, and this one still complemented. That will suggest the property owner applicants that flexible use with potential tenants.
And Bud, is your understanding that my office did submit a copy of your written report to the board?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent versus statements and conclusions in your written report?
Yes, it would be.
Great, thank you, Chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions uh, the board has.
Any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Next case, four twenty-six, twenty-four D, forty-eight, twenty-seven, South St. Lawrence.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are you, uh, hearing objection on this matter?
Yes.
Okay, um, counselor, have you had the opportunity to speak with uh?
Yes, we've had two objectives. We, I thought we have, I don't know who's gonna withdraw.
I'm, I'm one of them. I'm likely going to withdraw based on the drawing that they're gonna show, but.
Okay.
And I, we had hundreds of number of conversations.
So the, the question I have for you, counselor, is uh, would, would you like, would you like us to, you know, we can pass it, take one? You get, have an opportunity to speak with this objector before we proceed with the case?
We, we did have a conversation for about fifteen to twenty minutes. We thought it was five minutes ago that she was gonna withdraw his objection.
Oh.
So, that's
Okay.
My surprise.
All right, all right, well, let's um, we'll go forward, uh, put on your case, and then we'll go to the objectors. Uh, you'll be able to state your objection, ask questions of the wit- uh, applicant's witnesses, and then we'll go back to the applicant for, for rebuttal and closing. Uh, Counselor Kopeck, uh, you may proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. I'm the attorney for Jacob's Builder Inc. To my right, Mr. Joseph Duchesne, he is the president of the applicant. To his right is our architect, Mr. John Hannah, and to his right is our expert witness, Mr. Kareem Musawir. We're here today requesting a variation to reduce the front setback from the required fifteen feet to eleven feet on the north side setback from two to point five feet south to one point five feet. The buying side yard setback from four point five to two point zero five for a proposed three-story, three-dwelling unit building with a detached two-car garage and a trans-served location. The property is uh, was purchased by my client from the city of Chicago. It was a vacant piece of property in our M five district. Property is a hundred and twenty-five feet deep by twenty-two and a half feet wide. The hardship here is to design, and I'll have Mr. uh, Hannah, uh, speak to this. Is to create a design that would be attractive for families and other people who rent this unit. We have met with the neighbors. We thought we had a opinion. John, would you please indicate the impact of the twenty-two point five feet on your design here?
Sure, uh, you know, typical city lot is twenty-five feet wide. This one's twenty-two and a half feet wide. And typically, the interior dimensions of a twenty-five foot wide lot, the building would be uh, about eighteen feet wide on the inside. But if I subtract two and a half feet from that, because a lot is narrower, the inside width of the building would only be roughly fifteen and a half feet wide, which makes it very difficult between quarters and bathrooms to fit in everything in there properly. Uh, what we were able to do by keeping our two foot eleven and a half inches on the south, on the uh, south side. And I think we got um, six or eight inches on the north side. We're able to do more of a standard uh, standard layout that'll, that's marketable.
John, one of the questions that we met with one of the objectors earlier. We have to build on what we presented to the uh, board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this does not, so we can't move that building over to adversely impact one of the objectives, is that correct?
Correct. The uh, the variation for that side yards a little strange because there's, there's, I, I'm, I'm the south building's uh, facade, there is a little piece that sticks out of her building. Because there used to be a row house on this lot, and it was attached to the building next door. When they tore that building down, there's a, there's about a one-foot encroachment attached to the south buildings, building that encroaches on our lot. So when we went to zoning, they made us go for that variation for a side yard, even though we have the two foot and eleven and a half inches or whatever this required side yard setback for the rest of the building. There's only about an eight-inch wide spot where we actually need that side setback that was called for in the variation. Mr. Musawir, would you please state your name and your address?
Kareem Musawir, twenty-one, uh, South Chicago, six oh six.
Mr. Musawir, you were retained to look at this property, and you visited this property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you reviewed the plans done by Mr. Hannah, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And you've prepared a report detailing your response to the standards for variations of the city of Chicago, is that correct?
That's correct.
And could you please state your findings?
Yes, so as Mr. Hannah indicated, this building was built on a lot that previously contained a row house. They were built lot line to lot line. If Jason, I was remembering, after the row house, it was still, it's a sixteen-foot wide lot. And so the uh, the matter in which this uh, building had to be situated with a lot required, so very interesting question.
And no further questions. My, okay.
Um, any questions for the applicant's witnesses, witnesses before we go to the objector?
Ju- just on the front, the front setback. Um, is that consistent with
Most of the building is, there's a lot of the vacant lot side was black. So other than that, we are fairly consistent.
All right, let's go to the uh, obj- objector. Ma'am, uh, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Avon Washington, forty-eight, twenty-four, South San Lawrence. And I would like this opportunity to withdraw simple reason, they simplified it for me. And uh, with the history of it, I've been in this community over fifty years. And they have done their research. Looking forward to the next.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, are there any other objections on this matter?
Um, I'm Lisa Corbin at uh, forty-eight, twenty-nine, South St. Lawrence. Um, and I would also like to withdraw my objection based on uh, clarification of the drawing. The majority of the building will still be almost three feet away from our building.
Okay, great. Kevin, can I just request that those withdrawals do not affect the response. We don't go for ninety or twenty days, we're gonna, a resolution within the next thirty.
Since the objective were withdrawn, there's, there's no objection for this matter.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, okay, any questions from the board?
No.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you, everyone.
Next case, four twenty-seven, twenty-four, eighteen, twenty fifty-eight, West Webster.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I got it.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kopeck, you can proceed with the short form.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. To my right is Mr. Jason Roberg, the applicant. To his right is Mr. Ramon Contreras, our architects. Property in question is in the R four zoning district and measures twenty-five by one twenty-five. Uh, we're requesting a variation for the existing floor area ratio from three thousand twenty-four to three thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet for the proposed third floor addition to the existing three-story, single-family residence. The hardship here is this was a hundred and twenty-five foot lot. We, uh, it's a standard lot by twenty-five, and in our four district, we could build in excess of thirty-six hundred square feet. We're requesting a building to three thousand three hundred and thirty-three feet. Um, Jason, you have met with your neighbors, is that correct?
Yes.
And you shared plans with both neighbors?
Yes, I have.
And they're fine with this?
Uh, they provided letters supporting our addition.
And those those letters are, you have given those letters to the zoning board. They're in your contact. No further questions. Ramon, uh, please state your name and your address.
Ramon Contreras, sixty-six oh three West Tiggins, Chicago, Illinois.
And you're the architect for this project?
Yes.
And based on, on the size of the lot that inhibited your ability to design a property that would uh, take care of the applicant's needs, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if this was a a twenty-five by one twenty-five standard city of Chicago lot, we would not be here because we would be building under the F A R, is that correct?
That is correct.
Have no further questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just a point of clarification, um, the applicant, do you live in this, is this the building where you live?
All right, with that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case, next two cases, four twenty-eight, twenty-four Z, four twenty-nine, twenty-four Z, eleven eighteen, North Oakley Boulevard.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. For the record, my name is Emmanuel Byram, with the law firm Shane Banks, Kenneth Schwartz, parent for Semco Realty Partners LLC, the applicant for the variations. To my right is Scott West, the property owner, and Ramon Contreras, the project's architect. The subject property is located at one 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 eight North Oakley Ave, and is improved with a three-story residential building with six dwelling units with a three-story enclosed rear porch. The lot is approximately three thousand ninety square feet. When the applicant acquired the property in twenty twenty-four, it had outstanding building code violations. When, when the applicant submitted to cure these building violations, it was flagged, the rear um, enclosed porch was flagged um, for a lack of original permitting history. To make these change, uh, to make the changes and to keep, bring the property into conformance with the building code, requires these variations. The applicant is seeking two variations to reduce the rear setback from thirty feet to ten point four feet and to increase the floor area ratio by eight point seven percent. Here, the, the practical difficulties are substandard lot, the lot only provides a hundred and three feet of lot depth. Also, the legal nonconformities, as the building is over a hundred years old. The, the requested relief is present on the block already, and the predominant use is multifamily, thus the request of relief will not affect the character of the neighborhood and will not be injurious to the surrounding improvements. Um, that, that's gonna be it for me, I think. Uh, we'd like to call our first witness. Mr. West, you are the property owner?
Yes.
And you are just seeking these variations to keep the building as it currently exists?
Yes.
And you talked to the neighbors and received support, and you submitted that with your application?
Both neighbors on both sides.
Perfect. If you, you submitted an affidavit and the statements are another true and correct?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, your testimony will remain consistent with those affidavits?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to call our second witness.
Okay.
Mr. Contreras, you are the project architect?
Yes.
And there was an affidavit submitted on your behalf, and the statement's another true and correct?
That is correct.
If you were to continue to testify today, your testimony will remain consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. Is there any questions?
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you guys so much. Have a blessed day.
Next case, four thirty, twenty-four S, thirty-three, forty-five, North Broadway.
I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for counter number four thirty, twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a hair salon. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the shorter form.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
I'm Kelly Reynolds.
And Kelly, you are a licensed cosmetologist, are you?
Yes.
And uh, you and your partner to your right, uh, have uh, been operating, uh, went into business a year and a half ago or so in a small space. You've been operating uh, a shop that does hair, but mostly kind of does men's hair, is that right?
Yes, mostly men's hair.
Okay, and then you found your business has been wildly successful, and so you wanted to have your own bigger space and you uh, negotiated a lease at this location, is that right?
That's true.
And uh, uh, how many um, chairs will you have?
So currently, it's the two of us, and we wanna add four additional chairs, so six total.
And how, uh, what will your hours be?
Our hours will roughly be between ten, seven P M. Monday through Saturday, potentially Sunday, just depending on like what the community and neighborhood kind of wants and what hours fit for like people's personal time for getting their haircut.
And um, we uh, worked with the forty-fourth ward and let them know what we were doing, and they had no objection, is that right? And uh, you and I worked out a uh, witness affidavit, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
Of course, yes.
And the lady to your right, what is your name? Will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Jennifer Ruiz.
And you and uh, Kelly are partners, is that right? And uh, you and I also worked out an affidavit, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
Anything you wanna add to Kelly's testimony? Okay, and the gentleman to her right, you tell us who you are, sir.
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, President of Sale Appraiser Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And at my request, you did a report which has been filed with the board, and uh, if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Correct.
And your conclusion is this will serve the public interest and have no negative effect on the surrounding property value. That is our case.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Next two cases. Four thirty-one, twenty-four D, four thirty-two, twenty-four D, sixteen, forty-seven, North Central.
If everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. My name, good doctor, is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Yes, my name is Mary Bates, M A P E S.
And you're the president of the Sedgwick sixteen forty seven condo association, is that right? And it's a hundred-plus-year-old building, and it's got a very short and narrow lot, and the back stairs and the garage are falling apart, is that right? And so you hired this architect, and because it's a short and narrow lot, he has certain difficulties planning it, and so we have the variance for the rear yard and also the rear yard open space, which you're gonna put on the top of the rocks, is that right? And we had a video conference with the alderman, and we had a letter of support from him, is that right?
Yes.
And we als, you also have talked to the other neighbors, and you are aware of no objections. And you and I worked out a fitness statement where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this two variances, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Correct.
We tell the board who you are.
Chris Brummer, owner of Home Architecture at hundred and three South Bullard Park, one oh eight, six zero three.
Because this is a hundred-plus-year-old, nonconforming building, a hundred by twenty-two something lot that created difficulties in plan, planning their redo of the garage and the back stairs, is that right?
Correct.
There really is no room between them.
That's right.
And so you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, these two variances, if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
That's right.
That is our case in chief.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I do. I, I just, how, it looks like there's one of the reasons, I think, for the open space in the back generally is for drainage, for rain drain, rainstorm, stuff like that. So how are, how is your, how is that gonna be adopted or dealt with?
Well, the garage roof is gonna drain out to the alley, which is pretty standard in Chicago. We do have an areaway drain at the bottom of stairwell, the deck.
It goes into the, the buildings, or into the?
Right.
So instead of, since you have the grass, it'll go into the building or into the alley?
Yeah, the, the area drain in the yard will ultimately go into the city.
Right, 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 directly, so.
Yes, and there's just no room to put any kind of?
No, I understand. I just wanted to know what the alternative, if that was part of your plans. Thank you.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case, four thirty four S, two nineteen North Polina. Thank you guys.
Right. While everyone is getting situated, I'll read the recommendation for calendar number four thirty four twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a sports and recreation participant use for a private health club for paddle tennis with conference rooms, office lounge, and locker rooms, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Paddle Chicago LLC, and is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October fifteen, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Scott Burder M. Arch. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman, Members of the Board. I'm lawyer Paul Shadle at the firm of D L A Piper, and with my colleague Peter Nacastro, representing the applicant in this matter, Pedal Chicago LLC. Joined today by Fabian Gosling, who's representative of the applicant. To my right and to his right, Jason Jarrett, a land planner with Oakland Kissel Associates.
And the board recognizes Mr. Jarrett's expertise.
Thank you. The applicant proposes, as you've stated, Mr. Chair, to repurpose space in an existing building at twenty-two nineteen North Polina to develop a Pedal facility featuring five Pedal courts, as well as related support facilities and amenity space. The applicant seeks approval of a special use of authorizing participant sports and recreation as authorized by section seventeen dash six, section zero four zero three F of the zoning ordinance. Property is currently improved with a warehouse building containing approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of floor area. This special use application pertains to the development of only the applicant's leased premises, which totals approximately thirty thousand square feet inside the building. The property is located at the northeast corner of Polina and Lake Streets. If I can turn to the first witness?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you could please state your name, address, and title for the record?
Yeah, my name is Fabian Gosling. I'm a manager and member of Paddle Chicago LLC with address at thirteen twenty, what, West Florida.
And D L A Piper, as your lawyers submitted, proposed findings of fact in an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, correct?
Correct.
And if you were to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with those proposed findings of fact in the affidavit?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll now turn to Jason. If you could please state your name, address, and your business or profession?
Yes, my name is Jason Jarrett. I'm a senior associate with Oakland Kissel Associates with offices at one thirty-one West Jackson here in Chicago.
And you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposed special use to authorize participant sports and recreation at the subject property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions, and is that, has that, sorry, has that report been previously submitted and admitted into evidence?
I have, and.
And if you were to continue to testify, Mr. Jarrett, would your testimony be consistent with findings and conclusions contained in your report, specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria and standards for approval of a special use?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. That's our case.
Any questions from the board?
I too have one. Paddle, while very fun, it's not the quietest of sports. All of the paddle courts are contained within the lease space, nothing, nothing outdoors.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and there's no concern about any sound mitigation that's necessary for any other part of the property that, or any adjacent?
No, there, there's, there's no concern.
And it's amazing, you're going, it's, it's amazing rebuilding?
Yeah.
Andrew Benford, Sound Cover of the Alps, also there too. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three cases, four thirty four twenty four S, four thirty five twenty four, four thirty five twenty four S, four thirty six twenty four Z, four thirty seven twenty four Z, forty-three forty-six Northwestern.
All right, here's the recommendation for calendar number four thirty five twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the gas station with an expanded convenience store, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Mushapa LLC and development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October seventeen, two thousand twenty fair, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Jeff and Associates LLC. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Kirwin's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Patrick Turner with offices in Elmhurst, Illinois, and I represent the applicant Mushapa LLC. The applicant is seeking a special use to establish a gas station with an expanded convenience store from two thousand two hundred and forty-six square feet to three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two square feet for a proposed addition of one thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet. The applicant also is seeking two variations. Variation number one is to reduce the minimum lot area from the required twenty thousand square feet to fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four square feet for a proposed gas station with an expanded convenience store. And the second variation is to reduce thirty-six linear feet of perimeter landscape setback to zero and eliminating a required tree and a shrub hedge. A gas station has been continually operating on this corner for over forty years. I believe it might even be nearly sixty years, but the applicant plans to remodel the existing Shell gas station by eliminating three existing auto service bays and expanding the building by again one thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet into a new gas station convenience store. The interior space will have an open floor plan with customer coffee area, a display area for food and snack products, wall coolers for beverages, product storage area, and a three-fикер washroom with a cashier station near the front. At this point, I would like to call my first witness, Mabub Abbas, also known as Mike, to make it easier, but Mike, you are the manager and member of the applicant Mushapa LLC?
Yes.
You, you acquired the property back in two thousand and thirteen, is that correct?
Yes.
It's currently used as a Shell gas station?
Yes.
Okay, there has been a gas station continually op, continually operating at this corner since at least the mid-seventies or possibly even the mid-sixties?
Yes.
The applicant plans to remodel and expand the existing building into, into a convenience store, is that true?
Yes.
And the plan includes the closure of the existing three service bays and the expansion of the building by one thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet?
Yes.
For an addition, correct?
Yes.
And you anticipate retaining the existing workforce and providing full-time or part-time employment for approximately five to seven employees?
Yes, exactly.
At this point, I have no further questions for, for Mike. And I'd like to turn it over now to Bud Kerwin at this point, and this is with respect to the special use application. Bud, can you please state your name, occupation, and address for the record?
Yes, Sylvester J. Kerwin, Jr. I'm president and owner of S J Kerwin Associates Real Estate Appligators and Consultants. They have offices at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
And again, Mr. Chairman, Bud is recognized as an expert, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Bud, you've visited the site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions, correct?
Yes, on several occasions, and most recently this past Wednesday, October sixteen.
And you believe that the the project complies with all the standards of the zoning ordinance with respect to special use?
Yes, after making my inspection, research, and analysis, the proposed expansion of the existing gas station by closing the three, or service base and to increase the area of about sixteen hundred square feet for a convenience store seems to accommodate a little bit larger area. It appears to me that, supported from the market, that is the highest and best use of the subject type property at this point in time. It provides a convenience for customers that have lived and traveled the territorial streets of Western and Montrose. It's been a continued gas station for over forty years, as far as I know. I did find four other similar properties located similar intersections. The land area is around fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand square feet less than the minimum of twenty thousand square feet. In searching those properties, I did not find any adverse impact to surrounding property prices or values or change in character of the area. Matter of fact, my judgment is this will be, be more efficient and contribute to the economic base of the city. And to answer your question, yes, it will not cause any adverse impact and will meet all of the standards and criteria of the city's struggle zoning ordinance.
Thank you for that summary, Bud. And you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, correct?
Yes, I did.
And that has been submitted with your report as part of the record?
Yes, I go into greater detail in the report with photos of these conflicts and other.
And if you were to continue to, right here this morning, it would be consistent with those opinions and conclusions?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, I have no further questions for Bud at this time. Any questions by the board?
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
There was gonna put one for the, for the variation?
Yeah, the architect, yeah.
So again, at this point, Mario, can you please state your name, address, and occupation for the record?
Yes, my name is Mario Chal, work for Jeff and Associates, okay, thank you.
And you are the project manager for this project. And you worked with George Fajardo, who's the principal architect for Jeff and Associates, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it is your and George's conclusions that this project complies with all these standards and variations required for, all the standards for variations, is that correct? In fact, George had prepared an affidavit. You had one in comparing that with George, correct? And you're familiar with the statements contained in his affidavit?
Yes.
And you would, if you were to continue to testify here this morning, it would be consistent with all those opinions and conclusions contained in that affidavit, is that correct? So you, in your opinion, it complies with all the standards for variations?
That's correct, yes.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Welcome questions by the board.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next three cases, four thirty eight twenty four S, four thirty nine twenty four Z, forty twenty four Z, seventy-two one North Clark.
Right. Here's the recommendation for calendar number four thirty-eight twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the gas station with an expanded convenience store, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Al Ramen Business, Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October ten, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Grift Studio. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Mark Kupiec. I represent the applicant. This is for the property seventy-two one North Clark Street. And we do have three cases, but all related, and the evidence that we put in here, I would ask you to apply to all three cases.
Absolutely.
Okay, seventy-two one North Clark Street. First case is a special use to expand the convenience store. Actually, it was more of a kiosk when they, when they started, it was an old, small kiosk, too small by modern standards. And a little bit of a long story, and I won't go into it, but the prior president of the corporation, Merza, had hired someone to build this addition, and he built the addition, although it turns out without a proper permit and no special use. Unfortunately, during COVID, Merza got sick and passed away without being able to resolve the problem. Afterwards, after his death, the family actually has been busy trying to resolve the problem. They hired an architect who plans, applied for the special use, went through an intake process, and got on the agenda for a hearing. But before the hearing date, zoning board staff took another look at the file and discovered that the gas station, which may be more than forty years old, is built on a split zoning lot in a little strip on the eastern portion of the property's own residential. So they were advised that the case could not go forward. They had to rezone it to cure that split zoning lot. But after that, went to the alderman, Alderman Hanson, their request went to a community meeting, explained the project with her support, city council, rezoned the property to cure the split zoning lot and allow them to refile their special use. After the zoning change was complete, they came back again, new process, of course, applied again for the special use. Unfortunately, another intake process, which they've been diligently pursuing it, making a few changes, and you've got their designs planned in, in front of you. And for the record, honestly, you ultimately supported the zoning change for the past, the first time, and you ultimately did actually. And you ultimately did actually write letters of support directed to Nancy at the time. Specifically, supported the special use.
We do have that in the file.
Good. So. Just, uh, give you some perspective here, uh, that they've been trying.
The long and winding road.
They were a little confused by it, so I just had to get it into the record.
Sure.
Just to let you know that they've been trying to comply.
Sure.
Uh, the special use. Uh, the, the addition, uh, the addition to that kiosk is only four hundred ninety seven square feet, so it's not a big addition. Uh, but certainly it was a necessary one, but that requires a special use. This is an old gas station, maybe forty years old, so the site is only eighteen thousand five, similar to that last case. But the eighteen five is actually ninety two percent of the current twenty thousand required, so it's a pretty close. Uh, and certainly complied at the time, it was a tiny building, a long time ago. And we've got a third, uh, third case, which is a variation, and this for landscaping. Stations built, and it has been built, so they could not comply with current landscape, especially that seven foot landscape setback. So we're asking for a variation on the landscaping. So that is the case. And with that, I'll call my first witness, Akil, would you state your name and your address? Business address?
Yeah, my name is Moindubin Akil Jadi. And, uh. My address is, uh, seven nine one three Nautica Avenue in Niles. And I'm the project manager for this project, and any questions on this project? I'll be able to answer.
Good. Uh, Akil, as I'm correct, in your opinion, based on your experience in gas station business, how old do you think this gas station is?
If you ask me, I'll tell you very easy way to answer, to answer this.
Simply, simply.
Very simple is that, uh, it's easily forty years old, it's older than the elementary school, school account street.
Good. And that, um, kiosk was a old, small kiosk, too small by modern standards?
Very.
So the addition to this kiosk was necessary?
Very necessary to have this business.
With respect to the second case, the, uh, the lot size, uh, also true, the, the property is landlocked, there's no ability to pick up a lot next door to increase the size of the site.
Yes.
And also true, the gas station is built, so it's actually not practically possible to, uh, to create a seven foot landscape setback to that third case.
Correct.
Akil, true that, uh, we had prepared, and you get signed an affidavit containing some facts, addressing the criteria for these three cases?
Yes.
And you signed that affidavit?
I did.
And if I continue questioning you, your testimony would be consistent with this affidavit?
That's correct.
Uh, that's all I have of Akil. Ramon, would you please state your name and business address?
Ramon Contreras, architect, uh, sixty six oh three West Higgins. Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five six.
And you are the project architect?
That is correct.
And you've worked with us through the intake process?
Yes.
Made changes to the plans when requested?
That is correct.
And that final version is the revised plan that the, uh, that the department had asked for?
Yes.
Uh, Ramon, with respect to that third case on the landscape, is it true, as I say, the property, this gas station is built up and developed? And there's no room to comply with the current landscape ordinance?
That is correct.
So that third case of landscape variation is necessary?
Yes.
Also true that you had signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I were to please you, your, your questions, your answers. My questions would be consistent with that affidavit.
That is correct.
Thank you. Third, uh, witness, Joe Ryan.
Joseph M. Ryan, the May I president of LaSalle appraisal group. The office is at ninety four fifty five South Boyne Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you visited the site?
Yep.
And did a written report in connection with your testimony here today? And Joe, it's true that your opinion that this special use meets all the criteria in the ordinance for a special use? And if I were to continue questioning you, your answers would be consistent with your written report?
Yes.
Very. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I have, uh, um, Mrs. Sher Eli here, she's the president of the corporation. Uh, only if you had some questions, but I don't think any testimony would be, uh, necessary. And her son, Eli, is sitting back there because he wanted to come here to support us in this case.
You know, just a question, um. What, what, where are the proposed bid requirements? For that, for that four forty twenty four Z?
Ramon, uh, you want to try this, or you?
Um, well, you're supposed to have a whole speed near the landscaping area.
Who's bidding still being a back to swat?
Yeah. Got it.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Alright, we'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, stimmen.
Three cases, four forty one twenty four S, four thirty two twenty four Z, four forty three twenty four Z. Four sixty five more carpenter, ten nineteen twenty five West Grand.
Alright, let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number four forty one twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of a proposed residential use. To be located within six hundred and sixty feet of an existing use listed in section seventeen. Dash three dash oh three oh seven of the Chicago zoning ordinance. To allow for a proposed five-story mixed-use building. Provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings. Dated October eighteen, twenty twenty four, prepared by Hart Shorn Plunkard Architecture. And prior to issuance of building permits, the final transportation demand memo. Uh, TDM is reviewed and approved by the Chicago Department of Transportation. To confirm compliance with section seventeen dash three dash oh three oh eight dash five. The Chicago zoning ordinance related to specific criteria or transit served locations. This is an exciting application because it is the first one that used the new form.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so congratulations, um, uh.
Someone knows now.
We really like it, I gave some feedback already, and we really like the new form, so.
Well, great, I mean, the, the, you know, as part of this is about trying to, you know, trying to streamline it even more. Make it so you guys are. In and out of here, uh, quicker, uh, than usual, it's, you know, even before these forms, I've been trying to do that, but these forms will make that even easier. And, um, this one is going to actually be a little bit of a test case, because we're going to show you how this will work. Uh, going, going forward, uh, but the proceeding's same as, as usual, uh, would everyone, uh, planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, um. What I would like, uh. Counselor, what I would like you to do is, uh, introduce your witnesses by, uh, name and address, uh. Start there.
I can do it, but that's amazing. Oh, so for the record, Katie Jinkydale from the law firm of DLA Piper, four 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 West Leek. Represent the applicant here, who is represented by Seth Halpern, uh, gentleman in the middle. He's the manager of Rage Group, which is, uh, the applicant's affiliate of, and his, uh, address is. Three one seven five Commercial Avenue, Suite two eleven, Northbrook, Illinois. We also have with us, uh, Sophie Vaidak, immediately to my right. She's a partner with Hertzard Plunkard Architecture, located at three fifteen West Walton Street, also, uh, in Chicago. And then I think you all know the gentleman at the far end of the table, Mr. George Kissel, who's president of Oak Ridge Kissel Associates. With offices at one forty one West Jackson Boulevard in Chicago, and he is our land use expert.
Okay, so we have the submission that, uh, that you submitted, um. Does everyone here affirm that the written application submitted is still true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so thank you, all of the documents are now submitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
They're welcome. No.
We'll take this matter under advisement.
And great, like, we keep a lot of work.
Four forty five twenty four S, twenty five way through twenty four South.
Is that going to happen again?
That is, that's the plan, you know, that's the plan to, to just never rethink everything into the round here. It's just, and so, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And yes, exactly, exactly.
Yes. That first, I'm going to have to actually make sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, it does put the onus on us, because, you know, but yeah, but yeah. Right. Okay. Alright, this is the. Last case of the morning session. Alright, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. For calendar number four forty five twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a proposed drive-through ATM. Within an existing updated parking lot, serving a financial institution. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, self-help federal credit union. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated October fifteen, twenty twenty four. Prepared by Design Bridge. Uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, uh, counselor, I'm, I'm going to presume that you've already had an opportunity to speak with the objectors? And you're unable to resolve the objection?
Correct.
So, okay, so, uh, proceed, uh, with your case.
Thank you very much, uh. My name is Steve Friedland of the Law Department of Applicating Thor Thompson. Here representing self-help credit union. Um, with me today, all the way at the end of the table is Kareem Musawar, our land use expert. Next to him is Rudy Medina, who is the Midwest president for self-help credit union. And next to me is our architect, Henry America with Design Bridge. Um, one. Quick item of, uh, um, shop that I just want to make sure. When we filed our application, someone, another, uh, representative of self-help, who we thought was going to be able to be here today. Did the affidavit that's attached to our findings of fact, um, that was a gentleman named Roman Ruiz, uh. Um, Rudy, Rivalfo Medina is here, I've got another affidavit, but he'll testify, but I would like to put that in the record so that you have his affidavit.
Sure.
Okay.
We've got it.
Um, this is, um, a request for moving an existing ATM. From the east side of Pulaski to the west side of Pulaski for self-help credit union. Self-help credit union has a bank, a retail bank facility, which is just to the, there it is there. Um, it's at the corner. Of twenty sixth and Pulaski. And, um, they have two parking lots along Pulaski. Ones on the east side, ones on the west side, today we're here talking about the parking lot on the west side of the street. Um. The existing ATM is on the east side of the street. Self-help is currently working with, uh, the Resurrection Project. On developing that east side of the street for a residential use, so that parking lot's going to go away. So their intent is to keep the parking lot on the west side of the street. That is the existing ATM that you're looking at here, um, uh, um, and that will go away. Um, and the, and, and bring it to the, um, west side of the street. They're not changing any of the driveways on the west side of the street, it's been a parking lot for a long, long time. Um, and it's, as you'll hear from our testimony, you can certainly see from the plans, it's going to get significantly improved because. Um, we are putting in a great deal of landscaping and other, uh, um, and new fencing and other things on the west side. Um, with that, um, I'd be happy to start with testimony?
Go ahead.
Okay, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Medina, um. Uh, please state your name and position for the record?
Good morning, my name is Robert Medina, I'm the president for self-help federal credit union. And I'm the owner of, uh, twenty five twenty four South Pulaski, Rowanish, Illinois.
Got you. Um, and you're familiar with that existing parking lot at twenty five oh eight South Pulaski, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar that we're requesting to relocate the existing drive-through ATM from the east side to the west side of the street?
Yes.
And that ATM services the, uh, self-help credit union office at the corner of Pulaski and twenty sixth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um. And, um, when you make that change, will there be any change to the driveways? That are within the existing parking lot on the west side of the street?
No, using the existing driveways.
And when we make the move over to put the ATM on the west side of the street? Will you be making certain improvements to the lot as a part of that relocation?
Upgrades, uh, repaving, landscaping, and new.
And would you say that an ATM is a necessary component of operating a financial institution?
Yes.
Um, and I'm assuming self-help credit union operates other ATMs in various locations?
Yes.
So you know how to operate ATMs?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and can you also confirm that there will be a new wooden fence that's going to be placed along the alley and the left property line? Uh, um, six-foot wooden fence to mitigate any impact on neighboring property?
Yes.
And just so we discuss the sound of an ATM. Do ATMs make that sound?
No, they tend to only make beep noises.
Okay, beep noises, got you, um, so. Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience? And won't have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood of the community?
That's correct, yes.
And do you believe that the proposed special use for the drive-through is compatible? With the character of the surrounding area in terms of planning, building scale, project design?
Yes.
And is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics?
Yes.
And finally, is the proposed special use designed? Uh, to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
I have nothing further. Uh, if I can move on, I'll move on to our expert, um. Uh, Mr. Musawar, please state your name and profession for the record?
Kareem Musawar, a land use consultant at twenty one.
And I don't know if you said it, Mr. Chairman, before, but you are accepting Mr. Musawar as an expert?
I did not say it, uh, but yes, he is accepted as an expert.
Thank you, thank you very much, then I won't go through all of that, I'll ask you, uh, Kareem. Did you prepare a report with respect to the application for the special use for the drive-through of this location?
Yes, I did.
And in preparation of the report, did you visit the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood?
Did.
And, um, you've been engaged to provide your professional opinion whether the applicant's proposal. To the, to include the drive-through in the existing parking lot. Will satisfy the standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance for special use, correct?
Correct.
And based on that review, have you formed opinions as to whether or not we've met those standards?
Yes, I have.
Is it your opinion then, that the subject site complies with all applicable standards of the zones?
Yes, sir.
And is it your opinion that the proposed drive-throughs in the instance, in the, in the interest of the public convenience? And that it won't have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood of the community?
Yes, that's right.
And is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area, both in terms of? Building scale, project design, and operating characteristics, hours of operation, et cetera?
Yes.
And do you believe that the proposed special use is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions for our witnesses, and we certainly would take any questions for.
Are there any questions for the applicant's witnesses before we go to the objectors?
Uh, I, I, we, yeah. So the, um, lot that is marked as west parking lot, I think I missed your earlier, so I want to give them the sense of like, you're talking about using the one that's. Immediately across the alley from the existing. From the branch.
North of the.
Where, yeah. Again, my direction. Uh, is the one that's going to be, uh, developed as, I'm assuming a multi-use building, or is?
It, the, the, the plan is to do housing, self-help credit union and the resurrection project, which is a not-for-profit that does housing. Are working together as a team to develop that at Ford Plaza.
So the existing, the existing ATM is on that lot?
Correct.
Okay, and it's on the north lot? Okay.
And you call it north, I call it east, because it's on the east side of Pulaski, it's just easier to say.
Got it, yeah.
The, the, the east side of Pulaski has a much larger lot.
Yes, yeah, so makes more sense that you do a development.
And, and that's, and then the west side is, um, so. Where it says existing surface parking lot, not, and I see.
Yeah.
That is owned by self-help. Planned to be part of another development, so. They have to move their ATM to the other side of the street.
I got confused, I thought it was. And are, is it residential on either side of, on the other side of twenty fifth place and adjacent to the lot? What, what do we?
Uh, all of twenty fifth place to the, to the west. Is residential. On the corner of Pulaski and twenty fifth is a funeral home.
Okay.
Um. So, um.
I understand.
The, if we go back to that, um, that drawing. Yeah, so that, that, uh, when we're looking at the west parking lot, because that's where the work is gonna be, it's gonna be done. And that, that building that we can see that's within the, um, the, 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 the site plan, uh, which, which would, I guess that would be twenty-five oh eight?
Right, so I think that building, no, I think, I think that building is gone now, it was torn down.
It's already been torn down, okay.
This is showing, I, I don't know what base map, these are not ours, our drawings, but.
And then, and then, um, adjacent to that building that was torn down, that's residential?
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay.
And that's where that building was turned down, that's where the, um.
The ATM is going to be. Right?
The ATM, the, the ATM will be on the northernmost part. I don't know if our plans are in the slideshow. That's the existing, that's, that will be the final design.
Okay.
Okay.
So those residential buildings will be adjacent to the ATM drive-through?
Correct. And so, so the reason why the, 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 the wooden fence is going up, there's also obviously significant landscaping that goes up there. And again, just to make the point that Rudy made, you know, this is not a drive-through McDonald's, this is a drive-through ATM, so you're sort of.
How tall is that fence?
Six feet.
And is it on which side of the landscaping?
Uh, the, the north, the outside of Pulaski, correct.
Is there additional, uh, from a lighting perspective, is there, uh, to at least allow for additional safety, there's lighting that's gonna be installed around the, the drive-through?
Yes, we have one lighting that's adjacent, directly adjacent to the.
Okay.
Hey, just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Henry Malar, I'm Mark, excited with Design Bridge.
Okay, thank you, and then, um, from a, maybe to preempt some of the questions, I, I presume that from a light and sound communication standpoint, those, those measures have been found to play to this.
So is there communication for inside the branch from the ATM, or is it just an ATM you go in and you?
Just an ATM.
So it's not as bad as a major access, okay, to her color access, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions for the applicant before we turn to the objectors? Okay, let's, let's turn to the objectors. Uh, who first, who would like to go first?
My name is.
Could you, uh, also state your address, please?
Four zero one nine West Twenty-Fifth Place, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay.
So if you would do me a favor, can you call back eight minutes before you do? Okay. I've been living on this block for forty years, okay? Where you see that dotted square, parking lot that they're talking about on the west side of Pulaski? Right, so that is the issue we're having, what's because? When you look across the street where the funeral parlor is at, they just put diagonal parking, when you see those little lines, they just put down diagonal parking there.
Do, do you maybe want to actually go, go up there and show us so, so that we can see exactly, yeah?
Yes, this building is gone, they knocked it down like about three or four years ago.
Okay.
We had an issue with that building, we got it marked down. So right here's the, um, funeral parlor. Here, they put six diagonal parking spots, here they put three, saying that we're gonna increase parking. For whom? For Self-Health. So actually, they didn't, they reduced it. But there's people that sneak in, we can get up to fifteen cars parked in here now, because they park here, 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 and here, along with the other spots. Because, um, Martinez knocked down a building here. This is a T alley. He knocked down this building here. We have cars that park here when he has a way. I'm not trying to be mean, but when they park over here and they have a way, they only have a way to come out. Alley is too tight over here to get out. So we got cars coming out this way, then we got cars coming through this alley. We've already had, since this started going over here, we've already had two or three accidents over, over here. Our illustrious alderman decided all the way on the other end of the block, turn our street from a two-way to a one-way, Twenty-Fifth Place. So just imagine this is car. So twenty, Twenty-Sixth Street, Twenty-Fifth Place, two-way. Twenty-Fifth Place all the way to Twenty-Fourth Street is a one-way going this way. So anyone that wants to go this way can no longer go that way, so they come this way. And these people here, they still get two, two directions to go into. So now we have more people coming up Twenty-Fifth Place because we got this door as him. Then we got the funeral coming over here. We got people that come around this way because they realize they missed this. Whatever, if you're trying to get to the funeral parlor and come this way, they go this way. So we have traffic, we have a lot more traffic. It's not my thing right now, it's by doing this, putting the ATM here. They've got cars coming over this way, now they're gonna have cars coming out this way. It's gonna cause more traffic. They didn't even consider asking what the people on the block wanted, or what they thought, okay? I've been living there forty years, my husband's been living there seventy-five years. We've never had this issue before. All, all we asked was, they should have just said, hey, we're contemplating doing this, they could have gotten feedback from us. So it looks to me like it's already gonna be set and done regardless. They've got the money, we just lived there. My only other option would be, sir, Mr. Musawa.
Who's over here?
Yes, sir. With your drawing of the parking lot, the way you want it, eliminate this here. Because that's in cause, that will have less cars coming out this way. Make the exit on this side. Because the way the parking lot is now, nobody parks here because they have this closed up. They have a gate there, so nobody parks here, so cars park here, cars park here, all along here. If anybody comes in at all, they go out to the same spot, fine. Put the exit over here on Pulaski. Why, why give us more headaches over here? That would be my best solution for you guys, without everybody on the block getting upset because we already have enough traffic going in and out through this little T alley. I got a guy, I'm sorry to go off base. We had a guy three, four weeks ago, in a big gigantic Denali, trying to get out through the T alley, I told him you're not gonna make the turn. He tried for like ten minutes, finally he had to back up, but he had to wait half an hour because somebody else parked right behind him in the T alley. So we have a lot of traffic congestion already in this little section. By doing this, we're gonna have even more. Even more, and that's the thing, that's what, we don't want any more traffic congestion. We have permit parking from here down. We have permit parking because we got people that go shopping on Twenty-Sixth Street that don't want to pay for parking, so they park on our street. They park in front of our house. And then we've got this coming now. I'm sorry, uh, you know, we're not crazy about the Resurrection Project because it's not gonna bring any. To us, it's not gonna be good. So I'm sorry the bank's gonna do that. I can't say anything about it, they already agreed on it. But this would cause more congestion right here on our little street. On our little street, it's only, the street's only like four or five blocks long. But this little section, because of what they did over here, on the, uh, car lot, we get more congestion now than we did before, and it's people driving like this. We've already, I'm telling you, they've already had like three X's, car parts on the street, we already know what happened. Sorry.
All right, uh, sir, did, did you, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Mike Allen, forty nineteen Twenty-Fifth Place.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, uh, what is your objection?
I have, uh, I've had trouble, my health is poor. And I've tried to talk to the two people that own those houses, uh, north of the parking lot. Uh, I haven't had a chance to, uh, or I haven't, uh, seen them yet. I know one of them, uh, works at, um, uh. No, uh, Shakita. And, uh, and he was opposed to it. I haven't, I haven't been able to talk to many of the neighbors, I would like a chance to talk to more of many neighbors, to see how they feel, uh. The house is on Twenty-Fifth Place, there's houses on Twenty-Fifth Street. There is the two houses there, and there's the house south of, the south of the funeral home. I haven't been able to talk to those people.
So, uh, the, the matter is being heard today, so it's gonna be ruled on today. Um, so as far as, um, so to the extent that's a request for a continuance of this matter, that request is.
I also feel that a freestanding ATM like that is, uh, the one across the street has, uh, people in the building. This one will be freestanding. They seem to be broken into quite a bit, overpriced in the area. Uh, where my daughter lives, they had to take the ATMs out because it has the things. Opened. And screwed themselves.
Okay, understood. Any, um, well, first of all, did either of you have any questions for any of the applicant's witnesses?
No.
Okay. Um, are there any questions from the board for, uh, either of the objectors? Okay, all right, at this time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing.
Thank you, um, and I have had a chance to talk with Ms. Castillo about this, and I do understand the frustration that there must be with the funeral home. Um, I think our perspective is that this has been an existing parking lot for a long time. Again, we're not changing any of the driveways, um, and we're simply putting in and on man the ATM on that side of the street. Um, the two things I would like to note, and, and I'd be happy to have this conversation if you'd like to on the record with Ms. Castillo. I, I think she stated that the diagonal parking on Twenty-Fifth Plate was placed was at our request. I think she pointed to us. It was not at the request of Self-Health. Uh, our, I understand it was done by the alderman. I really don't know why it was done that way.
That's what he told me, I'm sorry. When I talked to him, that's what he told me, that it was done per the credit union.
Yeah, it was not our request. Um, we have, as you can see, quite a bit of parking, so that wouldn't have been a need. And the other thing to note is that, you know, I don't think we think an ATM creates much traffic, but um, because Twenty-Fifth Place is one-way east, any traffic leaving our site will not go in front of their houses. I mean, no one can turn right out of our parking lot, they can only turn left out of our parking, so.
Can I say something about that?
All right.
Um, there are people that turn east coming out of that parking lot.
You mean west?
They, yes, they do.
No, I mean, he said you mean west.
I mean, you mean west.
West, they come out of here, and because they don't want to go over here, sit at the light, so they can come down this way. They go this way, so they can get Twenty-Fifth Street. So yes, they do turn this way. And then some of them go this way, because like I said, they'll come this way, and they try to get into the south, because they don't want to go to Twenty-Sixth, Pulaski, sit through the. So, yeah, I mean, unless you guys sit there every day for hours on end and watch what's going on, you're not gonna see this. But we see this on a regular basis, every day. Yeah, the parking lot's not being used right now? Because you guys got it all locked up and everything, so fine, good, it's yours, don't worry. But when it used to be open, that was the biggest issue we had, cars going in and out. And once it's gonna be open, it's gonna be the same thing again. You can tell me all about the syringes and everything, there's syringes over here. Okay, there's syringes over here. I've never seen anybody in this parking lot shooting up, because I see them shooting up behind my house. So, no, that's, I'm sorry, just, it's just, you guys gotta stand there and you guys gotta watch everything, you guys gotta live on that street to understand exactly what's going on.
So, I, I just, uh, those were the, the comments that we wanted to make.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I, I guess the only question I have is, um, currently, so the parking lot that we're talking about is not currently used.
Right.
But the other one is, and about how many cars park there on any given day? The one, the one that's currently being used.
East side, oh, uh, we, and any given busy day for us, we're gonna have thirty cars there and.
Oh, that's not true. Um, and how many cars, uh, come through specifically, do you think, for the ATM? Or is it usually the same?
I would have to get accounts, but I would say the ATM probably gets used maybe fifty cars a day? And that's, I messed in it at this point.
And the, um, uh, the parking lot will be for, uh, general, for the public or exclusively used for your parks?
So used for internal, so staff and tenants across the street.
So there's, so that, that anyone who's parking here, not doesn't represent that, would be totally otherwise.
And we, we still, we're still gonna retain parking across the street, there'll be some parking, so.
Yeah, there's, the, the, on the other side of the street, um, the residential project, there will be two lots, right along the alley there, that will remain as part of the, uh, union for, um, for some parking, but they'll retain the west lot as well, and that's where the ATM is coming out.
And when people use the lot, I, that ATM usually, it's, you're going into the ATM. When the customers use the lot, how, how much time do they generally spend inside the?
Like, if they're, they're there for a transaction, it could be fifteen minutes, or they're there for a loan, it could be an hour.
Okay, got you.
So will, will those spots in the east lot, will they be exclusively for Self-Health? Or would they be for the residents that are living in that development?
So on the east lot, there will be fifty feet, basically two lots along the alley, and those will be more exclusively for Self-Health. The residential project will be a separate project all to itself, with its own parking.
All right, uh, with that, we are going to take this matter under advisement, thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I move that we convene in the closed session pursuant to Section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in an open session. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto. I vote yes for a closed session.
Yeah, so he can. I mean, they can't regularly have people follow them. First of year. That's why, and this is actually.
That's, that's hard.
Let's just say.
Was still.
Everybody ready? Okay, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number two thirty four twenty three S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the extension is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four oh five twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four oh six twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four oh seven twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four oh eight twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eleven twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twelve twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar number four thirteen twenty four Z, four fourteen twenty four Z, four fifteen twenty four Z, four sixteen twenty four Z, and four seventeen twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four eighteen twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four nineteen twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twenty twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twenty one twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers four twenty two twenty four S and four twenty three twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twenty four twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twenty five twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. Move to approve application for calendar number four twenty six twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four twenty seven twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters approved. Move to approve applications for counter number four twenty eight twenty four Z and four twenty nine twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number four thirty twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number four thirty one twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Oh, actually, hold on, let me start over then, since there's two here. Uh, I need to prove applications for counter number four thirty one twenty four Z and four thirty two twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number four thirty four twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for counter numbers four thirty five twenty four S, four thirty six twenty four Z, and four thirty seven twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for counter numbers four thirty eight twenty four S, four thirty nine twenty four Z, and four forty twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for counter numbers four forty one twenty four S, four forty two twenty four Z, and four forty three twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number four forty five twenty four S. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move that we recess until two P M. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes for a recession until two P M.
Yes. Why? For the rest of the, for the one case.
Yeah. Terrible shame.
I don't want to share with my commission. Also, can I just say how impressive it is that they do that considering all four of us S names? Angela's the one who breaks it up a little bit.
Yeah. All right, well, enjoy the rest of your day. Have a great weekend.
Yeah. Good luck. Enjoy your present day. I, I'm sure it'll be great. I mean, so we will, we will see.
Well, Nick, uh, you guys ready to go? All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeal. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are back and we are calling, uh, three thirty six twenty four Z and three thirty seven twenty four Z.
Continuance?
Oh, yeah, that's right. You know, that's right. Yeah, I'm jumping.
Do you want to hang out with us?
Any continuances or withdrawals?
Oh. Uh, Tim Martin here, uh, for the law firm, Dallas Hard Rains. Um, I'm here representing C N R Holdings Growth LLC. Uh, this is a matter on page eight, uh, number two sixty four twenty four S for a cultivation use or craft growth. Uh, we're withdrawing this case. Um, the license holder is C N R Holdings Group, but they've recently had a change in ownership. Um, so therefore we have to reapply with the, the new ownership.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so calendar number.
You'll see us again.
Sure. Uh, calendar number two sixty four twenty four S is hereby withdrawn.
Thank you.
Do you come back before or after the state acknowledges it?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know. I'll find out soon enough. This happened yesterday.
All right, now with that, we are calling three thirty six twenty four Z and three thirty seven twenty four Z. All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Council of Atticus, you can proceed with your question.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Nick Fatikas again for the record. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner of Lock Homes LLC. The applicant owns the subject property in two thousand and six south Des Plaines. The, uh, subject's light is, the subject site is, uh, irregularly shaped in that it's thirty feet wide, but only ninety seven point five feet deep, and it's currently vacant and unimproved. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new three-story, three-unit residential building. The building will be supported by a three-car garage at the rear of the lot. In order to permit the development, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the minimum lottery requirement and increase the area occupied, uh, by an accessory building in the rear setback. Uh, both of those, uh, relief requests are directly related to the ninety seven point five foot depth dimension. We have two applicant, or two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Nicholas Lockemout, and our project architect, Peter Sternyak. And with that, um, Nick, can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Nicholas Lockemout.
And you are a manager of the applicant, Lock Homes LLC?
Yes.
And again, uh, as I described it, you're proposing to develop the currently vacant, uh, parcel with the new three-unit, uh, three-story residential building.
Yes.
And, uh, in order to do that, we're seeking to reduce the minimum lottery requirement, uh, required for three residential units and increase the area allowed for a detached garage in the rear setback. Is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, you did provide the board with an economic summary of your projected costs as well as return?
Yes.
And it's also your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided. Is that right?
Yes.
Uh, and then next chairman, um, Peter Sternyak. Peter, can you state your name and address for the record?
Peter Sternyak, uh, my office is at sixty six fifty North Northwest Highway, um, suite two oh five, Chicago Avenue six zero six three one.
And you're a licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
And you prepared the plans for the proposed residential building?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the ninety seven point five foot, uh, depth dimension is really what creates the practical difficulties, particular hardships in this case? Is that right?
That's right.
And Peter, it's your understanding my office filed with his statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided. Is that right?
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board?
I, I don't think so. That, the garage is detached, right?
It is, it's a detached garage, and there's actually really nothing, um, unique about the garage. It's just that because of the dimension, the substandard lot depth dimension, the footprint covers more of the rear setback because it's a shorter lot. Um, so really, we're just trying to put a typical three-car garage at the back.
And so there's, there is space there in between the two.
Yes, yes, and there is shown, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's not much, there, it's in the circled area, so we are, uh, in terms of open space, we are meeting that requirement.
Yeah.
But that's a seventeen.
How can you read that?
I think, yes, those are really good, really good glasses, sir.
I can't even read it close up.
All right, any other questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Easily.
Okay.
For a chance. Just quick.
So.
Yeah, really, man.
Uh, I move that we convene in the closed session pursuant to section two C four, the open meeting text for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in the open session. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Soto, I vote yes, we're in closed session.
Yay. Can we wait?
I don't know, can we, do we have to move? Yeah, can we just mute it then?
Big brother was watching, or somebody was.
Yeah, from your face.
I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Uh, yes, aye.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. Uh, I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the withdrawal is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three thirty six twenty four Z and three thirty seven twenty four Z. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. Uh, I move to approve the, uh, written resolutions containing findings effect consistent with the votes of the board at its September twentieth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Soto seconds, Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're done. Good weekend, everybody.